Keaton was kind enough, he's given us these packets here. But also in the work session agenda, you should have copies of all the letters been received. So today, so I just want everyone to have those in front of them before they present. And then I have a, I had a conversation today with Sorrentino's Mike DeVita regarding the tent permit. So currently we've extended our last board meeting, we agreed to extend the offer seating permit through the March timeframe as opposed to having our restaurants have to apply an additional fee for a new offer seating permit, which would then take them back to November. So they're extended through March. So his question was regarding the tents. We have a permit that we require the business owners to get and it's seventy-five dollars. And he just wanted to kind of ask if this board would be willing to waive that tent permit fee. You know, as you know, the restaurants have been under a lot of stress with COVID and you know, he's hitting his money obviously to buy any time because he had previously never put a ton of on that property is I'm sure anyone who else is going to do it or hasn't done it is going to have to incur that cost. So I just wanted to, I told him we were having a board meeting tonight, spoke with him this morning. I just wanted to bring it to the board to gather your thoughts. And if that's the direction that you want to go in, I can certainly go off agenda this evening. And I could put forth that resolution and make it official that then we would, you know, waive the tent permit fee.
Is there a, is there an inspection associated with?
There are, there are, yeah. So there, so, so one of the things that when I spoke with Tony and Tim about this at one point, you know, they do have to go over to the businesses. And in this case, it was three times Tony's been there so far because you know, there's things that like I didn't know they need with a light exit sign, right? Where they're, you know, and I'm sure there's another, other groups of things that I'm not, I just can't, you know, spell out right now, but so there are inspections that are required. So I, but I did just want to discuss it with the board because I told Mike I would. And so here I am.
Well, I won't speak for the others, but I think that, you know, in my evolved, I think we should, which is my take on it. I know there's a cost, but I don't think that seventy-five dollars out of the five restaurants that might need one is going to help our project in either direction. I, I, it's not that I don't think that our guys' time is important. And in normal circumstances, I would say, yeah, it is what it is, but anything we can do to help again, you know, when we hear numbers that sixty-three percent of them may not make it out, I don't want sixty-three percent of our restaurants buzzing for the grant. So if it's, if it takes seventy-five dollars to help the business, I'm okay with it.
As long as they are active about multiple times.
That, that was actually going to be my comment is that like, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, overstay our, you know, the generosity, generosity, right? Thank you. So, so yeah, I mean, you know, if they, if they set up the tent, follow the rules and we go out and everything's cool, but if they, they're awesome. But if we have to get Tony or Tim have to go out multiple times because they keep failing to meet the minimum standards, which primarily is like having an exit sign.
Yeah, it's fairly basic from what I remember from.
You know, so like, I don't know how you screw that up multiple times. But I would say that after the, after the second or third time out there, it's like, okay, now you, now you actually have to pay for your permit.
Yeah. Well, that's it. What's, so what about in the case where Tony's been out there now three times? In this particular case, so.
He's been out to Sorrentino's specifically.
Yeah, I think the message may be, you know, we're allowed to do this to, if the WBA can kind of inform everybody and maybe Sorrentino's was the beginning thing. I know Maria knows how to do it. She puts the tents up every year for the same.
So she knows what she's doing. And so that, that's the thing, you know, I was saying with this, you know, Sorrentino's really hasn't ever.
They've got no absolute tent.
The other after seeing they brought everybody inside for the winter. So it is, it's been a learning curve for them. I'm sure anybody else who goes out to do this for the first time, and there are probably people who may not even be aware that they need a tent permit to put a tent on, on their, on their property. So
Sure.
You know, so I kind of, I guess I'm, I'm kind of hoping for, you know, either a yes or no to keep it simple to for the building department. So they're not, well, am I or am I not charging this person? I've had to go off twice, you know, so either, you know, we feel comfortable in asking the thing.
I guess, just thinking about it logically, you know, okay, there's a learning curve. I don't know what's required to be, I throw a tent up. Tony comes out and says, oh, well, you forgot to do X, Y, and Z. I do X, Y, and Z, Tony comes back, that's pretty standard practice in many sort of construction inspection sort of scenario, right? If you fail to do X, Y, and Z and comes out again, basically, I can't be able to listen to things that give me doing.
Right.
And that's.
Yeah, then.
That's just lazy.
So maybe it's a one shot, like know what you need to do. If they have to go on a second time, they're going to have to charge you.
Well, I, I, I even, a third time, yeah, basically.
First strike, you're out.
Yeah, third, third strike, you're out. If I have to come out here three times to tell you how to do a tent.
We're going to have to charge.
Something, I know it should be the seventy-five.
Yeah, maybe it's.
Maybe a smaller fee, but I'm okay with forgiving DeVita at this point, you know, to set an example for the others.
Yeah.
Like stress that free time visit.
Okay.
Have to be fine. Yeah. I think that's fair. Yeah.
I mean, again, just like also, I have a business to hurt anybody here. Certainly, there's certain hurting of whatever we can do to help, but.
Okay. So it sounds like everyone is okay with that. And so, so Judy, so would I go off agenda tonight and put forth a resolution? Or how is that something to write up?
Right. A resolution for?
To waive the tent permit.
Okay.
One thought, the extension that we've given business owners. So it would totally coincide with that date. So then.
March fourteenth?
That sounds right. That sounds like the date, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. It would coincide with that. And then, you know, we can assess where we're at in March with everything that's going on COVID related. And then if the board wants to do it at that point, that, does that work?
That works.
Okay. So I'll go off agenda tonight and put forth that.
As long as that would. As long as, as long as we have a care.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Mike can be very appreciative. Thank you, guys.
Of course.
I think the rest of them have better times.
I know, I think. I'm sure Tony, you'd say he's going to have over there today.
Okay, yeah. I miss you about the day.
Okay. So Judy, will you email that over to me with the other resolution?
I think that was.
Okay. I'll get it to you. Okay, she got it. All right.
Yes, Deb, yes, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. I'll look for that then.
Okay.
All right. So other, any other correspondence before we? Feral cat focus.
Chip said he's just finishing training session.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on now. Sorry.
Hey, Chip.
Hi.
All right. Any other correspondence?
I don't think so. Other than the things that we, like the Oak Road parking, that's on here, right?
Yep.
Anything. And then the only other thing I do have is a letter from the lady on, or she? Julie Flanagan?
Yeah.
That on.
I put up any of treats and spread within easement.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I heard that.
And then you had the other two traffic in the, yeah, the reading area.
Right. And I don't, they weren't listed on your work session, but you know, they're, okay, that's, sorry, that can always.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's have Feral Cat Focus give their presentation and.
Kim, are you available, Kim?
Oh, I didn't, no, I'm not Feral Cat Focus. I'm the Animal Law Clinic. Edie is here from Feral Cat Focus.
Is there an order in which you?
No, that's one of them.
Whoever would like to go first, I can put up the presentation now if you'd like.
Can I, can I ask, so, so we're doing this, we're doing a longer version here and then we're reproducing it in the later meeting?
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let trustee Eto'o have a few things he likes.
Oh, sure. I mean, I, I figured we'd do it during the public hearing, but I guess Mike, the one thing I was going to say is I've been thinking about this since last time we talked and, you know, we've been receiving a lot of letters and everything. I think the, for me, I think the discussion really should not so much focus on the, the advocacy or the benefits of the program as a, as a practice. Our issue, as long as I've been on board, is and always has been an issue of enforceability. And I, I think we keep clashing on this, on the difference between advocacy and policy. And I think the, the key here is that the local law is about cats, but not for cats. The local law is for humans. And, and when, and this, this issue has come to the fore again because of the bad act of a human and our inability to enforce what is otherwise a voluntary practice on that resident. And so for me, what I would much rather get out of this discussion tonight, all the caring tonight, would be to hear less about why we should keep the law and more about how we should go about amending it such that we are encouraging its particip, participation in it, but also giving us the team or the clause, as it were, to, to enforce it when those individual bad actors do shine a negative light on what is otherwise a reasonably successful and appropriate activity. And how we can better do that. Now, the other thing I would offer, and I realize I've worn the rug on for me a little bit because it's probably not what your, where your head was at, but something else that I was talking about earlier too, is the idea that, you know, we were the first community that adopted this. And so to a certain extent, well, okay, we're not, we're, I thought we were, but, but the, the town has adopted it after we did. And so the town essentially adopted verbatim our local law. And I'm sure that in a municipality the size of the town of Amherst, they've got one or two bad actors here and there too. And we just don't hear about it because we're in the village land. And so they also have the resources necessary to enforce these things better than we do. We have a very small code enforcement office and they're already burdened. So then the question becomes is, is in this idea of policymaking and enforcing policy for the betterment of the community at large, is this something that we should be doing as a dovetail with the town? And similar to like a dog registry or a dog license? And, and how, how would that work? And I, I don't expect that you're going to answer those answers tonight. But that's where my head is at. I mean, I think, I think other members of the board are similarly, you know, leaning that direction. And so I guess the bigger question is how do we advance this in such a way that we're not here next Columbus Day? Or Indigenous Person's Day, or Canadian Year, we want to call it. Because it does seem to come up annually and I, I find that an interesting statistic as well. I, I wonder if that has some, you know, that the, that the number of interactions increased through the summer. And then we get complaints in late summer into September and here we are in October talking about it again.
So, so I won't, I won't do the presentation now. I think I, I still do during the public hearing, want to quickly go through. Also, my, my student, who is the student attorney for this, has practiced the presentation. I do want to give her a chance to do a couple of minutes on it and do the slides. Because I think it's important for background for people who haven't been here the whole time. But let me answer your very important and good question. And I do want to just note that it's somewhat hard to hear you all from here, just so you know, from, from the Zoom. So sometimes when you're going, as we're going forward, I just want to make you aware of that. And some of us may go like this and if we can't hear. But you're right. There should be, there should be a consideration of enforcement. And in fact, one of the things that I want to point out is the trap neuter vaccinate return law that you have in place was not what was violated because the person who was involved with the one thing that we saw that was happening through the foil that we did was not practicing that, is practicing it now, will be here to talk about it later. But is not practicing it right now. So I guess if you, but so if you want us to go back and do something different than I thought I was supposed to do for today, we certainly can look at an analysis of, of, of working with Amherst. But I didn't do an analysis of enforcement because there hasn't been a need for enforcement of the actual community cats law that you enacted in fourteen and amended in nineteen. That's, that's not an issue here. There was somebody who was doing something outside of that law and has received assistance and is going forward. And that, there's that one, there's that one situation. And as far as we can tell, there's nothing else that we know about this. So that's my answer to that. And I'm happy to talk more about that. And I think if you want to turn, if you want to pivot and say, should we do something that's with the town of Amherst? Should we do something else? We're happy to do an analysis of that. And, and that's something that, that we would do. That's not what I'm prepared to do today. Today I came back to kind of answer what I was presented with, which was this was a big problem. And so we've done some research and have some, some answers on that, which is the response to the Freedom of Information Law and some great research that Feral Cat Focus has done and the SPCA. Beth Shapiro will be here to talk on behalf of the SPCA later as well. Is that helpful, trustee Eto'o?
Yeah, I think so. And I think, you know, when it comes to the enforcement side of it, I think what, because, because you're absolutely right. And, and in talking with the complaint most recently and whatnot, I mean, it is obvious and clear and that the the violation in this case is very clearly not a participant in the program. And I think the difficulty is in compelling someone to participate in that program. More importantly, when, I, I think one of the things that, one of the, the bright lights that we shine on this issue for us from our enforcement side is that we have as a, as a municipality, we have limitations as to what we are permitted to do. So for example, our code enforcement officer is not permitted to enter a person's private property or their backyard without cause. And so, so any of, any observations that he or she could make would be limited to from the street side. And to a lesser extent, in this particular example, you know, he could have, and I think he did, you know, observe the rear yard of the, of the bad actor from the neighbor's property, the complainant's property. So, you know, but at that, he also, you know, he says, you know, look at like the best feeding practices, for example, they, they have very stringent, they have very specific requirements about, you know, for like a one hour a day kind of thing. So for him, you know, in the context of a day, it's, it's very difficult for him to necessarily hit that hour, right? To know that, that when he arrives, that that is the hour and that that's the appropriate hour. And then to come back and find out that that activity ceased at the end of sixty minutes or something along those lines, right? So, so from that perspective, then what I've been mulling over is, is the concept of some form of registry. I know that Feral Cat Focus has been keeping track of those properties and residents who have been, you know, legally participating in this process. And we're not privy to that list. But we, we could be, we should be. And maybe that's, you know, again, sort of working in concert with the town. Now, keep in mind, I haven't talked to the town about this, so it's going to come as a bit of shock to them too, but. But, you know, if, if this was something that the clerk's office maintained in some form of registry, that, that if you were, you know, tomorrow I decide that I want to, you know, participate in this program, the first step I have to do is, is alert the village and or the town that, you know, I'm going to be initiating this practice and participating legally. And now subject to that registration as an individual, I am also sacrificing my right to have that code enforcement officer make random inspections upon complaints. And then because I have voluntarily participated in this program, I'm also voluntarily allowing them to come inspected at times. And so I, I think what I, what I'm looking for, and these may not be the answers to it, they're just ideas, but what I'm looking for is some way for us to guarantee, guarantee is a hard word, but to, to give the complainants and thus the, the code enforcement officer a path to follow to ensure compliance with the code and a very black and white way of determining that they're not. So in this example, were we to have a registry and the, the offending individual was clearly not registered, then they are clearly outside the con, context of the code and are immediately in violation without having to do multiple visits or else, right? And then, and then the next question is where does, where does the town fit into this? Where does the Department of Health fit into this? What is the hierarchy of, of, of enforcement from, from the municipal side? So that we can encourage that bad actor to either participate or failing to do that somehow discourage the, the bad actor from, I mean, because some people just will refuse. And that's, that's where we were at, you know, at least according to our complaint. That in three years' time, there was just an absolute refusal to participate. And that leaves us handcuffed because there's no way we can force this to occur. And it leaves the complainant frustrated because there's no recourse for them either.
Man, let me just chime in just, just real quickly and really just to reiterate the point you're, you were just making. And the way the law is currently drafted and has been drafted, there really is no way for, you know, so it's Dean Connolly mentioned that this person was not engaged in TNVR. And, and the difficulty without some sort of registration requirement is really, there's no practical way for us to know that or not know that without. And we define what TNVR is. And then the code says TNVR is legal on a voluntary basis. And then it says, one of the things you can do in connection with TNVR is best feeding practices. So without us, it, it would require a, it's not a simple investigation necessarily without some sort of registration for us to determine even that threshold question. Is this person actually, we know this person's feeding cats. We have no idea whether this person is engaged in TNVR activities, which is a multi-step process that again, just creates a real practical difficulty for a small village to, to track that. Registration is one way I think that could possibly make it easier. Maybe coordinating with the town or the county and others, maybe even a more effective way of doing that. I just want to make that clear that this, that, that very issue of, hey, is this person actually a TNVR practitioner? No easy way for the village to answer that question under the way the law has been operating.
All right.
So what?
Then basically if this fell in our laps like it did, or actually if we've got a building department, they would check the, call the town clerk that that's where it lands and say, is this person registered on our TNVR program? He's a no, they're in violation. I think it's a simple voice, but Kim, go ahead with what you were going to say.
So part of what I think I'm hearing is a need for efficiency and good management practices. And we, I know that there are places that have tried registries that have given up on them. I, I have not done research on that for today. I am happy to deploy students to do research on that. I can speak for Kate because she's in class and other classes, but I'm happy to, to do that because I, I don't think that's unfair for you to ask to do that. But I just really want to focus on that this is, that, that in the, since two thousand and fourteen, there's only been one situation and there's been a lot of successes. And so to add the burden on the village, what you're saying is it does not have a lot of capacity of running a registry and checking a registry, that might be too much. So I would like the chance to kind of look into that more than, more before I say that that would be an answer because I certainly hear you wanting to do efficient and best practices. But I'm not sure if that is it based on what I've, what I've heard about with, with municipalities that have tried that. And I'd like to do a little more research with some of the lawyers who've worked on that and actually put one in place. And then I know at least one, put one in place and had to dismantle it. But I was at a conference that I went to and I didn't really talk through this particular topic because I didn't need to know much more at that time, but I certainly can learn more and, and share it with you all.
You know, I think we were just thinking, you know, I have two dogs and we've registered both of ours in the clerk's office to the town. So if we could work out a program that would kind of work that same kind of way was that you go to the clerk's office and you, you register, just like I register my dogs and then, and then they can basically maintain that. And hopefully it, it's only the anomalies that we have the problem with. But when we have the anomalies, they can be really bad, like we saw with this particular case. And we did see one a couple of years ago as well when I was on board. So we've had a couple. And I agree, you know, a ninety-six percent success rate is not worth throwing out a program. And I don't think we're wanting to throw out, or I'm not wanting to throw out the program per se, but we need, we need help with our anomalies, basically is what we're saying.
Yeah. And I think the, I think that's the key is that it's, we need to, we need to legislate the anomaly.
Right.
And around this practice. And, and we are encouraging the participation. And we also have to figure out what happens when you, when you don't participate in. Yeah. The other thing trustee Yates has brought up a couple of times about the number of individuals in a cat colony. And it's an interesting conversation. And I, I, I have to express, I don't really have a fair understanding of, of the process here, but you know, like the way the code is written as part of the TNVR process is that there is an opportunity, the hope that these individual cats would be released back to their, where they came from, but that there also is the opportunity for them to be placed with, with homes. And I don't really understand the second half of that sentence, like who does that, how that's done. But it does seem to me like in this specific example on Columbia, there was, I want to say it was at least six, as many as nine individuals. I think the number increased because they were having kittens. And, and so now, okay, so that, let's say that individual does participate in TNVR and, and the question becomes, is it right to put those six or nine individual cats back in that neighborhood? Because, because then the second question of enforcement is it's a quality of life issue. It's a nuisance issue. And in this case, the complaint was making that, their complaint because there were just too many cats. And so, yeah, okay, so this individual now has decided to spay and neuter them. So mercifully, we're not going to have more multiplying cats. But they're still going to be there. They're still going to, you know, frequent that area. And they're still going to create the same nuisance that they were creating before. They'll just be doing it without the ability to reproduce. So then the question becomes, is it appropriate above a certain number of individuals that they must be placed somewhere else? And is that even a feasible?
I know some of the answers to that, Matt, because I did participate in TNVR. You know, the Carousel Store on Youngs Road and Main Street. One day I pulled in there in the dead of winter and there were like fifteen cats sitting on Snow Hill. And I was shocked. So I went and spoke to the owner and she said, yes, I have a feral cat problem. So that spring, she and I got together, made a plan. And all summer, I think we were able to trap between twenty and twenty-five cats. And she and I spayed and neutered them. We got kittens. Luckily, Harasil Animal Veterinary, the technicians took most of the kittens and found homes for them. But now this was thirteen years ago. Now all that's left of all these cats of two. Okay. But there was no more reproduction. Eventually they age and they die. And if this lady on Columbia. And if this lady on Columbia, if she had kittens, she would have needed guidance from Feral Cat Focus to separate the kittens when they're still young, like six weeks, take them in, socialize them, and yes, adopt them out. And there are rescues who will take socialized kittens. So, but she needs guidance. You know, again, the law that we have now is good and it's been good within the village. It's just some things have to be a little bit tweaked.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think to that, to that end, I guess the, the question becomes is there, I mean, I hazard to say that, you know, you don't want to codify literally everything. But like, I feel like there needs to be, some of the language and the way the code is written, it's a little bit generalized. And you shall do this, or you may do this, or it's encouraged to do that or whatever. But there's no, there's no process available. So to point it to your point, I mean, is that, you know, you need, you need assistance with that. Like should this then be, should there be something in there saying like, you know, if you're going to pursue, you know, this, you should be contacting so and so or, you know, whatever. Because I think there's a, there's administrative aspect to it. There's a procedure associated with it, that there are people that are much better skilled and knowledgeable than our code enforcement officer. So like, I, I guess I'd be looking for, I, I'm looking, I'm a very process oriented person. I'm an engineer, like I, you know, give me A, give me B, give me C. And then like we follow those paths and very few successful or we're not. And I feel like right now we have some of those steps, but not all. And so maybe that's, that's where frustration comes from complaints too, is that there isn't a clear cut process of we did A and followed the B.
Kim?
Well, getting, may I speak at the ADR house? Um, getting on to this point, um, I understand where this is, where you're thinking. And I do totally get it and I understand it. I do want to give you some of the stats so you understand a little bit about that. And to the trustee who is doing, I believe it's trustee Tori, is that correct?
Tori, yes.
Doing the TNVR. Yes, that is generally how it works is we work with people who are, who have these colonies. And they contact and they say, well, now I've got a litter of kittens. We give them all the information they need. Of course, we can't run out and get them all, there's just no place for them all. But we tell them who to call, how to socialize. It's all on our feral cat website too. The socializing and how to do it, how to do it properly. We work with people on one-on-one. We lend out crates for people to do socializing of the kittens. And we do always advise for the people to work with the kittens and to try and get them out of the equation. That we do do and we have done it from the very beginning. So just to let you know that, that is the practice that we, that we transpa- aspire to, okay? So we do help people, we work in every way we possibly can. The SPCA serving Erie County is a wonderful resource as far as that goes. All the rescue groups, there's a whole list of rescue groups on our website that do take kittens. Can they take them all the time? It just depends on when. But again, we work with people, we counsel people, we lend out crates for people to put kittens in. And we take it the full gamut as much as we possibly can. Work with any individual that has kittens. If there are friendly cats that are in there, that people don't know where they've come from and they have no microchip and they're not spayed, neutered, and possibly they're just something that is dumped off. We also work with them and tell them how they can get them out of the colony, the feral cat colony and get them possibly into adoptions and homes and work with that as well. So we are folk, we focus basically on trying to get the community cats, the colonies under control. And we work with all the other aspects of it around it. So we are here as a resource, we have always been here. We haven't gone anyplace. I was very disappointed that, you know, we weren't called in on the last issue. We never got a call on it from any of the board members. And again, we are here for you. If you have a problem, please feel free, any of the trustees or the mayor, we would be more than happy to work with you. We worked with the last mayor and he, he backed me down when I was in Florida. And I, I worked with him then. So please feel free at any point in time to call on us. We are a resource for you. We will be here to help. I want to give you some of the stats that I came up with. Now I was asked to come up with just the village information, not the 1421. Not all that information because some of it does overlay out. Here's what we've, here's what I came up with. There are 26 caregivers in the village of Williamsville since 2014. So when we started this, there's 26 caregivers. 19 caregivers in the village of Williamsville have altered cats in the past two and a half to three years. So 19 caregivers have altered cats in the past two and a half to three years. This is where it gets interesting. 42 cats have been altered in the village of Williamsville in the past two and a half to three years. That's kind of amazing, the number there. Now, the average size of a residential colony, now you must go residential. There's a difference between farm and rural and so on, size of colonies. This is a residential. The average size of a residential colony is approximately four to six cats. That's the average size. Some people may have 10, some people may have one. The average size of a litter of kittens for one female, one female, four to six kittens is the average size of her litter. All right? Taking 19 caregivers altering 42 cats in the past two and a half to three years, times five, I took them, I went middle of the road between four and six, I took five. Five kittens per litter on the average will equal 210 kittens. Never born in the village of Williamsville under the TNVR program. Those kittens were never born, all right?
So can I just interrupt one second?
Sure.
So I actually received a letter, I just, I just want to make sure we're talking about village of Williamsville, one square mile, village proper, however you want it. Because I did receive a letter from a gentleman who said that he's been a resident of Williamsville 2007. And his address is not a village address, it's a, it's a town and Hearst address.
Yes.
That he, you know, is, it's very confusing because people just assume that they have 1421s, there's a code, they live in the village of Williamsville. But as we all know, that's not the case. So when you're giving me those numbers, are you, are we certain that we're talking the 26 registered TNVR residents are, are in fact in the Williamsville proper? If, if I, for lack of a better term.
Keaton actually asked that question and Edie spent many hours taking the numbers that she gave from the original meeting last time to make sure that the numbers here today are accurate. So the answer to that is absolutely yes, at the, as a result of Keaton asking for us to do that.
I, I went through and I got all the village addresses and started from there and compared the addresses with caregivers and so on. So yes, I did, I did look into that when I was asked to. So getting back to that, um, an unaltered female averages about two litters a season. So if you go back two and a half to three years, you would have to double that amount of cats. Because there's, say she's had two litters per year, plus the offsprings of the kittens. And you never could possibly do all the numbers because her offsprings could be females and males and so on and so forth. So you can't possibly do all that math. But what you can say is you have made great strides in Amherst, the village of, or excuse me, the village of Williamsville. You have made great strides there. So if you have these 28 caregivers from the year 2014, when it all started in 2014 and you brought us in the first time, we have been able to, those are the numbers. And I mean, I think that you should be very proud of yourself for the numbers and what you've been able to accomplish. Has there been some people that have fallen under the cracks or around it and knocked on them? Possibly, but until we get notified, we, we don't know these things. We don't know if there's a problem until we're called. But I think you've got a lot to be proud of with your numbers. People are doing the, they're doing the DNVR and they're following the practices as best we know. We tell them how to feed, we tell them what's acceptable with the Erie County Health Department. We work with people on this all the time for their colonies. Are there any questions on the numbers I gave you?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing I'll just say about that, and that was very interesting. But I, but I also think it highlights one of the problems, like we as the village, I don't, had, that is not information that the village was at the village's fingertips. And I, I think it points to the need to, if, if this program is going to be meaningfully codified and, and encouraged and regulated, we need a better way to know what's, what's going on. And may, registration may or may not be the best way to do that. I, I agree that would, it would be good for us to know what other communities have tried that, what their experience has been. But to me, it's still somewhat concerning that we, you know, are out there encouraging this program specifically legalizing it. But we really have no idea how it's operating. And maybe that just means we need better coordination with Feral Cat Focus and the Animal Lock Clinic and others. But, but you know, that's, that is interesting.
Well, I guess the, just the, the issue is that I do think we need to be able to track it better. Because, you know, of course I, I don't have access to any of those numbers and, and nobody else on this board does either. And, and I guess the, the bigger part of that is, you know, I, I kind of, you know, if, if people are willing to be part of this program and work with Feral Cat Focus, I really think it's important that the resident reaches out to Feral Cat Focus. I don't think that it should be, you know, a board member having to reach out to Feral Cat Focus per se. Because, you know, that's just, if, if it's going to be something that we're codifying for Feral Cat Focus, it's really, I think, between them and the residents to work it out. I just, you know, our building department doesn't have the, the resources certainly to dedicate anyone over there to, you know, to have that, that responsibility on their plate.
One of the things that you all talked about in 2019 was creating a website that would help people navigate this on their own. So that might be something to revisit and, and certainly we could provide some assistance, we can't make a website for you, but we could provide some assistance in, in getting materials and links to you so that people who were interested would be able to reach out to Feral Cat Focus or other resources, the SPCA as well on their own.
And from that perspective, then the, you, you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, we could definitely use Survey Monkey for that type of thing. We could create an actual license and status base, just like we do with our volunteer.
Have a link right on our website to that.
Exactly, it could be one of those blue bars right at the top of the screen on the homepage. And then, you know, it would be volunteer, registered cat.
And all the information would be right there at their fingertips.
Exactly, including, including my, my very prescriptive procedure of how to go about.
So Edie, you think that's a good idea?
Um, I think it's a very possible idea. It's a very possible idea that something could be put in. I don't see why not. And again, like Kim said, her and I can get together along with, of course, the SPCA to chime into what they're thinking would be a good idea. And we can possibly help or assist in any way, shape or form. It certainly, any information, my, my thought on this is any information you can give people, educating, educating, educating is what you need to do. You would be able to show, tell them what the laws are on feeding. You would be able to tell them and show them, give them other ideas. Send them over to our website to get other ideas. You know, possibly that would be a, a very good thing. I can't see where it would hurt, let's put it that way, not at all.
Yeah, she almost has it's on page. From the website, you click on, you know, wild cats, feral cats and describe it. Because not everyone knows to call it a feral cat. I didn't know what a feral cat was until we talked about it in 2014 here. So if we had a page and how to register and then take you to Feral Cat Focus and have our own bullet points of what we do here, yeah, I think it's, it makes it very simple. And I think that's what we're after really.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I'll just make another plug for, I think, for that sort of endeavor too, is something that I think would make a ton of sense for the village to talk to the town folks about to coordinate. Again, their, their program, at least as written, largely mirrors ours. They host our server, our server anyway. I mean, it seems like that's a, something that, that it would be in everybody's best interest to try to coordinate that sort of effort between the two municipalities if possible.
I'd love to take that on. Great, yeah, it'd be great, honestly, because I've done it and I understand it. So yeah, definitely, I would take that on, with your help.
Great.
So Beth, Beth Shapiro from the SPCA has also joined the meeting. I don't know if she's going to wait until speak till later, but I just did want to say that the Beth who's on there is, is Beth Shapiro. And she's a fountain of knowledge and, and somebody I rely on for, for a lot of things, just like I rely on Edie. I'm, I'm the lawyer, but I, I've only done a little bit of, of actual work in the area. I just hang with the cats in my house mostly. I'm, again, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to do research on why, whether this would be a good and best, and whether having a registry would be best practices or, or in why the place, by the places I've heard find it difficult do to report back, because the last thing you want to do, the last thing you want to do is be back, we're going to go to trustee two. We don't want to be back here next year saying, oh, this registry, oh. So you want to make sure that if you're making a change, that it's going to be a good one. So I would encourage research before making a decision.
Yeah, I, I could also see it as, as almost like a, a community pitch too. Like if we have an issue, right, in a neighborhood, we can then go look and say, oh, there are 42 Columbia. Oh, there's a neighbor two doors up that is participating. We should send the neighbor over, but hey, listen, here's how the program works. Because maybe if your neighbor didn't even spoke to you about it and said, you know, it's not as bad as you think it is. It could be a lot better and you're not upsetting your neighbor. So it may give us a, a quick answer to put somebody out, you know, because we can certainly reach out to Feral Cat. But, you know what I mean? If we had a house, like if we have an issue, building department, they can look at the number and say, you know what? Let's send this person an email and say, can you go talk to your neighbor? Because we have an issue over there and we want, we want them to help them.
And there are a lot of cat friendly people in the village, a lot. Who are willing to help, there are a lot.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think it would help, I think that's been our problem is, is our anomalies when they come, they're really strong and they're really upset with the residents. And then we don't have any, there's nothing we can do, we're helpless.
And shrug and they're upset with that.
Yeah, so I think we've gotten some good information and I'm really glad we, you know, kind of been able to make some headway hopefully.
Yeah, so to, let's do like a community resources tab.
I'm gonna chat, just so everybody.
I would do, to make it really fun, I would have a picture of a cat. No, and I say this because pictures are very important because sometimes when you do, you go on the website, it's, it's all words, you know, there's.
They can do that.
You can do a picture.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Cat and have another community resources and, you know, you know, instead of feral, I mean, we use the word that, because you're right, everybody knows, you know, community cats or stray cats, whatever. And so people know where to go and it's, you know, but I, I like putting a picture on there. I think the community resource tab should be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
Uh, Ms. Shapiro, are you?
So, thank you for having me. Hello. And so use all the kids in the background. So the SPCA, it obviously it's serving Erie County. We work in concert with the Animal Law Clinic, with Feral Cat Focus, with the Health Department. And as we're working all together, we can provide resources. We can be out there in a very different way than Feral Cat Focus can. And so we love for you to utilize us as a resource. And, you know, we promote TNVR in, in the community and work with other state humane societies through the Animal Protection Federation that supports TNVR. So questions, obviously Edie is our expert, but questions can certainly come to the SPCA as well. And we're more than happy to do help out and, and provide whatever you need.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should have the links of the SPCA and Feral Cat Focus. Somebody can look in there.
I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, so that sounds like the direction we're gonna head with this. Right? Okay. So yeah, so we're not looking to overturn the TNVR law at all tonight. So we've really done a whole reboot of pattern here, but.
Education is.
Yeah, it is. It is. So, um, is there, cause I, we do have other agendas I want to get to tonight. And we are going to open, you know, have a public hearing on it where people will have the opportunity to comment or speak. So is there anything else, Kim, that you would like to address here before we move on?
No, I'm, I, I just really am excited to hear the, the developments and the openness to making sure that the research is done and that you're continuing to be a leader of best practices in this. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Trustee Tori.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it. You got it. I love the guy experience.
Yes.
That speaks volumes.
Just from being on the board.
Yes. All right. Um, okay. So are we moving on then to the other agenda items?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So Keaton Grant's update. I saw the one on the quick, WQIP.
Excellent. So with a little bit better news, we are moving forward with Sam Grant, moving through the process. So we received a bunch of information that we were going to fill out, including budgets, plans that we had for the playground, et cetera.
Okay, being new here, what is that, please?
Oh, sorry. Sam Grant is, is the money that Karen McMahon was able to steer for us for the playground.
Great, thank you.
It's, it's just been held up in all.
Yeah, so we, we applied for that earlier this year and it went through the process and Karen McMahon helped push it through. And I believe when we spoke with her in late September at the playground dedication, I believe she may have pushed it a little bit more because about midway through last week, we got some information from the state. So it is a grant to the New York State Dormitory Authority. So, but yeah, so, so that's good. We are gonna have a meeting next week with Bernie and that meeting is going to be talking about the water quality improvement project or WQIP that will help benefit our sanitary sewer improvements plans that we have on that one. Might have some new information as of then. We didn't really have anything reported as of last week, so we haven't met for a couple of weeks.
And I mean, Bernie's our contract grant writer, so he helps us, you know, actually fill out a lot of our grant applications for Bernie.
Bernie Tella and his son Anthony Rotella also work with us. They're kind of a team. So that's our village grant writer. And we always appoint them at the reorganization. That's when they get appointed for the term. So. Thank you. Um, okay. Any other grants updates or?
Oh, no, that's all official.
All right. Um, so for board reports, the Oak Road Drive, the residents, the sidewalk requests, I mean, you had touched base on that and that's something you've actually talked about and had the conversation started before you got onto the board and I think somebody chimed in about that. You know, connecting the sidewalk on the corner there.
Right.
So, um, I actually.
Just to be clear, we're talking about along the side of the laundromat.
Correct.
Well, that too, but also around the bend.
Where is it? Beyond the, beyond the dry cleaners and then, you know, after you missed the, acted the entrance into the plaza. Exactly. Yeah. That's all right.
Yes, and then there's also the sidewalk around the corner.
Right.
There's an email going, you know, as you go further down the road where the sidewalk ends.
Exactly.
You're going around a bend heading out towards Garrison.
Right.
Yeah, so there's two sidewalk issues. So, um, so which one do we want to talk about first? Did, did traffic and safety have anything to say about the one by the dry cleaners, that area?
Well, the problem of what the complaint had, the problem was there are too many cars parked there presently. And then when you come out of Oak Road, you don't, you don't have the visibility you need. And we brought it up in.
There she was parking on Main though, right?
Yeah.
No, also on the side of Reeves.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes there are double cars there.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I looked.
Oh.
So traffic, they checked it out and they're curious as number one, why across the street where the churches, there is only a two hour parking limit? So they're wondering if possibly they could, why is that? Do you know that?
I, I don't know why there's a two hour parking limit anywhere in the village.
Because those cars, cause I know. Because those cars that are presently blocking the view of parking at the laundromat are people who run in to get their dry cleaning. And as you said, we don't want to disrupt the businesses and start finding them, finding them for parking violations because what they have gone through with COVID and traffic also agreed with that. So one of the members of traffic and safety are actually gonna speak to Wendy directly, who was the owner of Reeves, and see if she can figure something out with your parking. We're also gonna investigate why that two hour parking sign is there because people who are parked on the Reed side could easily park in front of the church instead. So there's confusion there and both items were gonna be looked into.
Yeah.
Now, do you know that in front of the church, there's the, also the nursery school that's there?
So to pick up and drop off. That's what I said too.
It's pretty just.
Right, right.
So depending on when this resident was trying to, I don't know if it was that time or not.
Right.
I have seen, you know, if there's a Reed truck parked there, I have seen
Right.
somebody parked beside it because they're just running across the street to drop off their child at the nursery school. So I, I don't know.
Well, and then.
That's a good thing.
And the complaint, I also wanted to know why there isn't a sign there that says no parking from the curb forward or whatever. And I didn't have an answer to that. And again, it was something traffic and safety said that would be something that the actually enforcement, police enforcement would be, I mean, right or not?
Yeah, and it does, I mean, cause there's, without the sign, there's state traffic law that prohibits a distance. So, you know, parking within the distance of.
Right.
So like, if we had our parking enforcement officer walking the street,
Right.
Doug would pull out as a state measure.
Right.
So, you know, failure, failing of that sign, the driver is still, you know.
Under that law to park somebody feet away from the corner.
But exactly. You're gonna go and wrap him on the head with it, you know, as you can do. That, I know that there was a curve hit wrong and you, you. There was, there had been a part of picture Main Street projects that was like an ad alternate that we couldn't afford or something that wrapped just the Main Street improvements around that corner and down, created a curve along the side of.
Angled parking.
And that wouldn't be nice.
It really would, wouldn't it?
I think there's a plan out there for it, it just takes money.
Well, they just repaid over there.
And they just sort of pay. So.
Because it wasn't.
Right. So, but that doesn't mean we can't treat the top of that or at least put a sign in to.
Yes.
discourage people.
That's what she's looking for. And she sent me another email and I tried calling her today, but answered the phone. So I will simply.
Yeah, from a, from a science point of view, any sign, any, any public right of way that the village has control of, we can sign, even if it's reinforcing establishing state law. If we want, if there was a proximity to the intersection issue on the Main Street side of it, that would have to come to the ER too.
Right.
But that doesn't prohibit the sign from being erected. It just means it, it put it.
Right, but she's, she's definitely talking about Oak Road itself. Yeah.
That niche should be uncodified.
All right, that's good.
And then with respect to the two hour parking thing, that comes back to a much bigger conversation about, about turnover and availability of public parking on the street. Yeah, that you have the circulation. I don't want people, you know, chewing up all their parking retailers or anything. But, you know, without the enforcement, I also haven't heard or seen some complaint that people have been able to find parking space. You know, it's like, gee, is this parking problem that we've had for all these years?
One that we created?
Right? Like I wanna go.
And I've talked to Judy about this too and she's on, she can chime in, you know, we weren't sure. Gotta be opening up the floodgates with, you know, with parking. I, I don't believe she can correctly put on, but I don't believe that she's had any complaints either from, you know, Main Street businesses about, you know, somebody violation of the two hour parking.
Right. Yeah. Maybe we don't have the volume this year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I'd like to go and buy a bunch of black plastic bags and hang them over every two hour parking sign on the village and just see what happens.
Is that part of the sign though? Is that permissible?
Yeah, sure.
Well, if they're perhaps like green.
Sure, green, plastic, whatever makes it, they could even be burlap so that they're, you know, file-creatable. I don't care.
Yeah, right. We don't want plastic.
But the point is that, you know, to, to, to give, to give it a true test run and say like, do we really have this phenomenon that people claim we have? And I genuinely don't believe we do.
Right.
But, you know, but on the other hand, it also comes back to the parking enforcement question. You know, if we don't have a time limit on parking, then we don't really have any people to force.
I think a lot of it came out of years ago where there are some businesses that you have an eight hour shift. So they would be taking up Main Street parking spots, which really they can't afford parking. And so some of the, I think it was before I was on the board, that was where it came out of was creating the turnover. So that way there's not somebody sitting in front of a business for eight hours on Main Street who's taking up this spot.
Right.
But you're right, we, we've gone down this, should we do three hours instead of two hours? Because, you know, if you look at a salon, that was one of the comments we got from on salons was that it's hard to get somebody in and out within potentially three hours and they've gotta drive with curlers or whatever and their hair run out to the car, meet the car to the next spot. So, so we, we had, we have certainly kicked around parking in the past.
Welcome to the village.
We're gonna, we're not gonna tackle parking tonight.
We're pulling record backwards.
We don't, you know, we, we don't wanna cause any discomfort over here. So we'll tackle that some other night. But also, so I think that that's doable. Do traffic and safety, they didn't have any problems with that either?
No, no, so I should bring it back to them. They should go ahead and put a recipe for a sign.
Put the recommendation in. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I'll go. All right.
Um, and so then the other Oak Road Drive sidewalk is that, you know, as you go around the bend, sidewalk ends abruptly and then there's a bend and then it starts further down the piney.
A way down.
Way down, right. Yeah, so that was something that, you know, we kind of uncovered and we had a discussion with before you got on the board.
I could see that on the screen.
Right, so, um, you know, I just, you know, at this point, we're looking at the surveys to see exactly what is municipally owned property, how far in we go. But we haven't come to any conclusions yet from what I'm aware of, of, you know, moving forward with that. So.
Okay.
But it, you know, ideally, I think that this board would like to see a sidewalk connect just for the, the sheer safeness of that area. Because as you know, the down there, it's a, it's a blind curve and there's really no safe way to, to get by there unless you're you know, off into the, the green area on the other side of the road. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a discussion that we're gonna have as soon as we figure out where we're at with the surveys. Okay.
All right.
So, and that brings us to planting trees and shrubs within the easement. So that was one thing that did happen at that Oak Road address on the corner. They did put shrubs and trees in on what is the easement for certain. We were just still trying to figure out how far in the easement goes. But I, we had that email from a resident, Ms. Flanagan, who asked about people planting shrubs and flowers and plants in the easement areas. I brought this up to this board before and we didn't really come to any consensus. Because as you know, it's kind of run amok in the village. Several people have taken over that easement area.
Yeah, yeah, on my screen as well.
Yeah, so I don't know.
They are, they are permitted to do so as long as the height stays under three feet. So, you know, and, and with full understanding that should there be a utility issue or some other access issue for PPW that is sacrificial. I think if I'm, if I'm correct, am I conflating two different things? Did, did Ms. Flanagan's email, was that related to care of those?
No, so more related to why are people allowed to do that to the easement? And you're saying in the code that they're allowed to do it as long as it's under three feet.
I maintain that way. And that's, and that's sort of the, one of the issues with the, with the Oak Road property is that there is nothing inherently wrong with those plants physically being there. The issue that they present today is that they're well, they're well, they're taller than height, they're well over set at six feet. And so, you know, quite frankly, I'm not much of a culturalist, but looking at those plants, if you wear half, top half of them off, the bottom half's been back. So, you know, from that perspective, it was a, it's a maintenance issue for the homeowner that chooses to do that. Again, with the understanding that it isn't their property.
Right. So as long as it's under three feet, technically the code is allowing for that?
The code, so what the code says is you cannot plant a tree in the public right of way without permission of the village. It then also says in a separate section that you can't have any shrub or anything else that's then basically over three feet in height within 15 feet of, within 15 feet of and of the street. So reading those two together, I think Matt is correct that essentially by omission, you, there's no prohibition necessarily on planting shrubs within the public right of way, only trees without permission. But within that right of way, because that right of way is certainly within 15 feet of the street. But certainly can extend beyond the right of way because the right of way is almost never 15 feet wide. Any shrub has to be no more than three feet. So I, I agree with the interpretation that essentially you can plant shrubs in that right of way, although if the village needs to remove them for some reason, they can do, the village can do that. So you're putting them in the right of way at your own risk, but you can't plant a tree without permission.
And then from my days of the zoning board, I, I would take the interpretation of that statement that the three foot within 15 foot is not entirely dissimilar from the fence rules that we have as well. Front yard fences, particularly in corner lots. The idea being that you wanna maintain that clear vision triangle where the driver is approaching an intersection can see to the far side of the intersection. You know, so within 15 feet of the road would essentially, would traditionally sort of be your front yard property line in general terms. So I think to Chip's point, by omission, we're permitting anything under three feet to be planted from the curb line to 15 feet. But that may not necessarily have been the intent of the code as written, so much as it was to say if you're putting shrubs along your front property line, it can be kept low. You know, and now I think about it, I probably have a hedgerow that's violating that, so we should probably. I, I don't know if it's my hedgerow or my neighbors, but anyway, so, um, but I guess the bigger, bigger philosophical question then is, is that an activity that we want to, I guess, not discourage? I'm not saying encourage, I'm saying like right now, it's, it's allowed by omission.
Well, I think her, her case in particular, it's, it's an actual corner that she's probably referring to that, um, it's pretty, it's much higher than three feet.
What, what intersection?
So, the corner of Pasadena and Milton. And it's much higher than three feet. And it is, it, it can be probably, you know, if you're, if you're driving down there, it's probably.
That's not where she lives.
She lives on, yeah, she doesn't.
But that's her house you're speaking of? I know the house you're talking about.
No, that's not her house.
Oh, I know the house you're talking about.
It's probably the sight line, you know.
I love that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I do. Beautiful high grass.
Yeah. But it is, if you're walking down the sidewalk and you're, you've got to be very careful because you can't really see people coming up.
Right, I didn't realize that until she was.
I, I think, I mean, because she's mentioned that before.
Oh, she did. We didn't really stay here to say.
No, but I, that's why. Yeah, that's why I brought it up because she mentioned it to me when I discussed it a couple of years back, when I got on the board and, uh, yeah.
That's different, yeah, maybe it's that.
Zooming, zooming around on Google Street View here, you can change or pass through time depending on when the truck was there. And so like, there's one image where they're, they're clearly relatively new, they're low, they're clumpy. And then there's another image where there's a car parked there and the grasses are taller than the car.
Yeah.
So, I think that the earlier image is better than the, you know, the newer image, Chip. But yeah, it does look charming.
Right.
Offensive appearance, but it is potentially hazardous.
Yeah. So maybe the ones closer to the corner, in that case, we should just ask the property owner to cut them back so that they're, it doesn't need the, the site use of somebody can call in on the street.
And, and are the trees that are in their tree lawn, are those planted by the tree board?
Um, I believe they are.
Wow, one is really close to the intersection.
What type, what type of tree is it then?
It's a small.
What is it, Chinese, Chinese flower trees that I planted after the storm?
I think that's one.
Yeah, Chinese blossom or something.
And they are, and they are short, they're right under the power lines.
Yeah, they don't go any taller than the power.
But then it was, we're at the tree board, uh, National Bridge gives us like a fifty dollar credit to plant a certain tree underneath the power lines. So they, they burn to it. So we plant trees, but I almost pay for that tree.
Oh, that's nice.
It's not tall trees, so there's certain species that we get money.
Yeah, we have a lot of those chains flower trees everywhere now.
Yes, there's certain ones.
The bark has to be covered because the deer love to pick them.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, I'll, I need to know here, Timon this week, so when he gets back this week, I'll talk to him about that property on, on the corner and have him maybe come up or take a look.
You know, those grasses grow wild and crazy after a few years and often it's hard to control them. So maybe this owner is actually waiting for a change, you know, you'd be surprised.
Well, and they, uh, like the Pacers put in a couple along our share probably, and, uh, they, they whack them out. They cut them super short at the end of the season and by, by mid summer, they're fighting tall.
Yeah.
You know, so they, they grow quickly overseas and then die out. So it's, it's probably difficult to control.
Very. Well, I'll, I'll, I guess that I'll call up with Timon and we'll see for that.
Good.
And then, um, the South Peter, the crosswalk, uh, I, that has to go to both HPC and Traffic and Safety. So Ben has the drawings for that that we received from the engineer.
Where was that gonna be exactly?
It is, it's right in front of the, the old schoolhouse.
Yeah, at the corner, you know, by the church that crossing over.
Right.
There's like a set of stairs there now.
Yeah, because people park there to go to church and now he's.
People always, you know, we've got, now, more so now, I've hired with the playground and crossing over at the corner. And so there's really no, there's really no safe route to get to the trail if people are biking and crossing, you know, so, um, you know, it's been something that we talked about for a couple of years.
Okay.
Um, so Ben, can you get those plans over to, I need for Traffic and Safety and to Matt for HPC?
No problem.
Thank you.
Glad you said problem.
Because we're ready, we're ready to go to bed with it, so if we can get those at the next meeting discussed and, um, hopefully a relatively quick turnaround on that. Obviously, nothing's gonna happen this, this season. Uh, but in spring, it would be great if we could get the green light to go forward with that and, and get that when people start walking and biking and so forth.
It could happen.
Well, if you can, I, I'm not sure what the turnaround is, but, you know.
Really, it's really temperature dependent. I mean, it comes down to concrete.
Yeah, but I'm saying we'll be getting the approval from HPC and Traffic and Safety.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that, that could probably be before the end of this calendar year. And if he gets about to bid in January, somebody might bite on it. As long as like, if concrete doesn't freeze, they can have it done by April.
Okay, all right, thanks, that sounds great. Um, and then the no turn on red from Mill Street to Main Street, that was a a request that, um, John was here as, um, he has on to Traffic and Safety. I'm not sure if that ever made it over to Traffic and Safety, but it was a request from a resident. She was asking.
I've heard from Mill on to.
Coming up onto Mill Street towards Main Street.
Touch of brass would be your, you're right.
Touch of brass, if I had, we didn't never take Mill Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, so she was wondering if they could, if we could possibly have a no turn on red.
I think that's very smart, that witness an accident there where there, and a car pulled out, it was red, and then whatever. So, um, yeah.
So you, I don't, yeah, what Traffic and Safety has to say about that.
Yeah.
And, and I, like I said, I don't think it made it over, it may have, but then I, we never got a report back as to what they decided, so.
Yeah, we brought it over and we discussed it, but I don't know what the, what the result of that was.
I mean, it, it would definitely create a bit of a continuing issue at that intersection. We'll be able to take a look at it too, and I'm sure the cameras police will look into the, the accident reports.
It's really hard to see, we know that, right?
Oh, yeah, it is, well.
Cause you're at a, you're at a plant, you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the reasons why they, they moved the stop bar up on the right lane.
Right.
Is that because you couldn't, you couldn't see coming right on red, guys from as far back as they were, so. It had been since geography for a while, I did, this residence issue is trying to, uh, mitigate sort of the screaming, uh, southbound on Mill, running right up to the red light, screeching on your brakes, making the left hand and then hitting right, you know, and then that just keeps this queue of cars sailing right past the front of their house. Even though it's a red light. But I, you know, Ben, did you, uh, did you ever have a chance, I know, because you're, you know, you're just sitting around looking for stuff to do, um, uh, did you ever have a chance to talk to anybody in the county about Mill? Or who owns it or figure that out?
Well, we own it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we had talked about the idea of adding fog lines as a continuation of what's happening from the town line.
Yep, and I had a conversation with the contractor, the paving contractor today, and we're, we're going to be doing that.
Oh, awesome. Okay. So then I guess the only other question I have is, um, before we just absolutely commit to doing that, since we have quite a bit of pavement from curb to curb, um, do we wanna, is there enough room to make it a bike?
No.
Okay.
But it's enough.
There's not that much room as you get into the village between the curbs.
Where is this man? Where is?
So, so if you, if you, if you drive on Mill, which like you, until, until my daughter started going to Mill School, I never drove up. I, I, I started, you head north out of the village off Main Street and the road is, is wide, or curb to curb in most village streets.
Right.
And, you know, of course it's.
Very windy.
Right, but then, once you come around like that third bend and you get to the, the town village line.
Right, it's wider.
Suddenly it gets wider, there's no curbs, but they have white fog lines that near, that create lanes for you.
Right.
Shoulder.
Right.
So fog lines on our proportion of the road would have the effect of visually narrowing the lanes without moving the curves. And so there's, for years, I mean, for as long as I've been a trustee before that and Glen Park Joint Board and everything else, um, people have always complained about speed and people going around those turns like it's the form of, you know, Formula One, right? So, um, if we had some way of visually giving them cue that this is a narrower lane, even if it's just the form of white paint stripes along the.
I like that.
You know.
Cause it's true.
Yeah, uh, maybe the, the behavior changes just for the cost of being, and, I mean, having driven on Union now.
Yeah.
I drive, I slow, I slow down on Union.
Right.
I just do.
Right.
You know, so why not?
I think it's a good idea. They call it fog line?
Fog line.
So it, it's a cyclist, it kind of gives you a fake bike lane, if you will.
Yeah.
Cause it defines the space that I can ride in and the driver should not cross. I think too, I think the no turn on red should also be addressed to the safety issue, but now there's a crosswalk on that side. Whereas before, before picture Main Street, you didn't have a crosswalk, it was on the other side of where vice or.
Yeah, they're both nice.
So now they're both sides, so people aren't crossing.
Which is necessary. Which is dangerous, very dangerous.
It's dangerous, I think, for pedestrians too, so that the intersection's changed since picture Maine, and we should probably revisit it. But that's my.
I agree.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Thanks for the fog lines.
Um, okay, so that's, um, that's it. Chip, there's no updates on the cable franchise agreement, I'm guessing?
No, we've heard nothing from them.
We'll, we'll just keep that on there until we hear back from them.
As long as they keep paying us, we're okay. Uh, you know, they're the ones who asked for an updated agreement, so.
Right, right. Okay, uh, so we have like five minutes into our board meeting, so let's just take a break. Um, and we'll reconvene with the, um, board meeting at seven thirty and then the unfinished business on the work session agenda, we'll jump into that after the board meeting's over, so, okay.
Bill's just tied it up for those who are interested.
Yes.
What is?
What did you say? You're muted.
You're muted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, so the Bills just tied the score for anyone who's interested.
Oh, all right.
Oh, what is this score?
Uh, it's seven, it's seven to seven. According to Twitter, I'm not actually watching the game, but I did see it on Twitter.
The Titans are sick. They should.
I
Okay, so I want to welcome everyone to the village board meeting for Tuesday, October 14th. And we will start off with a pledge of allegiance led by trustee Tori.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, one God, usable.
Administrator, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Rogers. Deputy Mayor Piazza. Trustee Yates.
Here.
Trustee Eto'o.
Here.
Trustee Tori.
Here.
Attorney Greco.
Present via Zoom.
Deputy DPW General Crouchy Philinen.
Likewise, present via Zoom.
Deputy Treasurer Piesco.
Here.
Director of Community Development De Priest. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Everyone.
Yep, everyone's here except for Basil.
Okay, so I will go on to the approval of the minutes. We have no, since we have no proclamations this evening. So I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the September 14th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the reorganization meeting, which was held September 28th, 2020, as amended for the 2021 reorganization meeting date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this evening, we have three public hearings to hear. So I will make a motion to go ahead and open up the first public hearing, which involves the safe operations of bicycles on sidewalks in the village. This public hearing was continued from September 14th, 2020. So if you would like to speak on this topic, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. And Mr. De Priest, I'll let you go ahead and take charge of letting folks in for that.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Matt was the second. Okay, got that.
All right, I know we had a couple of presenters that were, would like to speak tonight. Kate Fleming and who do you need to be in the off house?
We're doing, we're doing the bicycles.
Bicycle.
Oh, geez. Okay, going back. So we're on the bicycles, whoever would like to speak on the bicycles. If you'd like, please use the raise your hand function. Or you could use the chat bar and just let me know.
Keaton?
Yep.
Hi, this is Nick Roth, 135 Oak Grove. My device says I raised my hand, probably can't see it, but I do have a couple of comments to make.
You're outside.
Okay, thank you. I think mostly you know that I'm a member of the Traffic and Safety Board. And I just want to say at our July and August meetings, we started to look at this issue about the situation with bicycles on the sidewalk. We were going to try to pick it up last week at our scheduled meeting, but we had a heavy agenda and didn't get get to it that, so we are taking a look at it. Most of you know, I'm a longtime cyclist and I've got an excellent understanding of bicycle etiquette that's missing. I do know that cycling is an inherently dangerous activity. And I describe urban street cycling as a blood sport sometime. You really have to have your wits going about you. Recently, in an offline conversation with trustee Yates, we were talking about how you can walk on the north side of Main Street nearly unobstructed in the area commonly referred to as the core of the village. But you get on the south side of Main Street and that's where the problem gets worse. And the problem's going to get much worse for several different reasons. Global bicycle sales went through the roof this year because of the pandemic. Inventory sold out, supply chain's been disrupted. Bicycle mechanics are busier than they've ever been because people decided they were going to get out and ride their bike. The largest growing segment of bicycle sales now are e-bicycles, electric bicycles. And this is where the problem's going to really take off. Currently, there are three classes of e-bikes, classes one, two, and three. One and three are pedal assists. The problem's going to be class two, which has a throttle. And who likes the throttles? The teenagers and the millennials. I've ridden all type, all three classes of the bikes. People like them, especially with the throttle assist. It mimics a motorcycle and they're not going to pay attention. Another problem with e-bikes is that they're very heavy bicycles. They're a bit cumbersome. They're difficult to maneuver, especially in crowded situations. And when they tip, they can cause a lot of pain, not only to the rider. In addition to younger people gravitating towards those e-bikes, they're also becoming very popular amongst senior citizens. I bike quite a bit and I've seen a lot of senior citizens now on e-bikes. The e-bikes that senior citizens ride, they most likely, they don't have the throttle assist, they have the pedal assist. So they're, they're not using the motor when they're on the sidewalk. But again, these are big cumbersome vehicles that have to be dealt with. And this is going to go down to a two-wheeled device as well. E-scooters are becoming very popular because they're a very reasonable alternative to e-bikes. 250 bucks at Target gets you a neat, neat little scooter. Again, the scooters are preferred by younger people. They can zip around on them, but they're very prone to tipping. There's not a lot of stability to them. They can lose control of them in a heartbeat. So that's, that's going to add to the mess we have right now. And this goes beyond bicycle, the congestion on Main Street. We have people walking dogs, we have people walking more. You have kids in strollers, kids in wagons, kids on tricycle. The tagline of walkable Williamsville is in danger unless something is done. I know from past experience and the work with the traffic and safety, we've talked to Main Street about possibly putting bike lanes on Main Street. I'm sorry, we talked to the state and their answer was no on the bike lane, on the bike lanes. So we can't go there for the time being. I think this chapter 89 has to be written more comprehensively, not only to govern the age of what age people have to get off the sidewalk on their bikes, but look at the technology that's involved, evolving and people's interest in these type of devices to zip around. And it's going to have to be controlled. Thank you.
So.
Well, you know, if I, if I may finish with one thing, Deb. I just got a, I just got a kick out of this because I know one of the issues with the, with traffic on Main Street that we've been talking about and, you know, the golden goose is moving, moving the toll booths and now cashless tolls. But I was just curious if anybody saw in last week's B and they're out of the past section. 50 years ago, they're talking about State Senator William Adams, who was retiring. And he said, one of his greatest accomplishments in the state legislature was a passage of legislation which would move the Williamsville toll barrier. That's 1970, he made that comment. Good luck with that and that's all I have to say on that topic.
Well, that doesn't happen, right? So I, I think Mr. Roth makes some very, very good points. But I think, you know, also that what we're trying to tackle tonight would cover, because we're talking about any other motorized vehicle. So I think what we're looking at tonight is for just the traditional bicycle that doesn't involve any type of motor to allow folks of any age to ride on the village sidewalk with that type of bicycle.
Right, and I, and I understand that, but as I said before, e-bikes are becoming the strongest segment in sales in a couple of years. Because more manufacturings are, manufacturers are entering that arena, the price is dropping. Everybody's going to be on an e-bike. It's like all of us driving electric cars in the future. So you're going to be a bit short sighted if you just say traditional bicycle as we know it. And again, it comes down to enforcement, just like our parking regulations and everything else. It's a difficult situation to enforce and I understand that.
Yeah. Well, we're on chapter 89, chapter 89. So, so absolutely, you know, what, what Mr. Roth is suggesting, I know that it's on the way, but I do think too, you know, we are going to need to address that. But I, I would like to address getting this section at least in order as to where we are as a board and, you know, for public comment and then, you know, closing it out and taking a vote on it. Because we did have it open at our last meeting and I don't want to, I don't want to leave things, you know, open unnecessarily, so. But that is something, you know, that we as a board are going to have to decide. I think the biggest thing is going to be enforcement because, you know, as we all know, we can have every law written on paper, but unless we have folks out there who are actually enforcing those, it's, it's, it doesn't always.
And hopefully it's the anomaly again, by having a law, it's hopefully, if somebody is clearly in violation of it, you know, when it's quiet, you ride your bike on Main Street, on the sidewalk, it seems here, right? I've done it, although I don't like to do it when I'm on my cruiser, my wife. But when I'm on my road bike, I just sleep early and I go down Main Street to avoid being struck. Although that doesn't always work, I almost got struck two weeks ago. But, um, so.
Please don't.
Yes.
I literally had to put on my brakes and almost went over my handlebars. But anyway, so for me, that's, I do think that after, I really assume because e-bikes are out, you know, it is the next thing. They're going to try, especially at Main Street, I think it's going to be a danger on Main Street. And hopefully the law is there in the event that we, we have to enforce it, you know, with, if we don't have a law, there's nothing we can do about it. Kind of the same thing with the T and VR program, you don't have anything when we have our anomaly. I think most people are going to buy by then, but our anomalies, we need to go to deal with legally.
I guess with the question with what Nick was bringing up there with this class two e-bike, I mean, it's, maybe if it's urging on a motorcycle, at what point does the DMV get involved?
Right.
Well, because of the restrictions on that, the, these e-bikes are all, are all capped at 20 miles an hour. And that's the DMV regulation for them is 28 miles an hour, either pedal assist or without throttle.
That's, I mean, it's still.
That's very fast on a sidewalk ridden by 13, 14 year olds.
Say, e-bikes can't go on the sidewalk.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
How though?
Muted.
It sounded like she was going to swear, so I muted it.
Oh, okay, Mary, actually, I know her. So she has to be.
She has to be.
I call.
If you'd like, you may speak, I asked you to unmute. Well, would you like to speak on this issue, the safe operations of bicycles?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, sorry, I'm up in the Adirondack, so we have very little, we can't hear a thing and it's, you know, so we're only getting this intermittent. But I did want to speak, I.
I need your phone name, excuse me, I need your phone name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Marilyn Alphys. I live at 59 Evans in Williamsville.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am a senior citizen and I've started biking quite a bit this year with a couple of other people. One, I, I'm aware of the e-bike situation, whatever, and I think that that is, can come up in the, in the future at a time. But to get through these times and maybe the spring and whatever, that part of what we notice when we're biking is that the bicyclists are not saying on your left or not being courteous. And that is something that, which helps pedestrians. Because as a senior, I do not have the balance and the whatever on a regular bike to be in a two-foot bike lane. So if I can't be on the sidewalk at all, it really creates a problem for me. Now, I walk during intersections and get off my bike, but I think part of this is the courtesy of the young kids and people who pedal a lot, who don't warn the pedestrians on the sidewalk that they're coming behind them. You know, this is the things that I've noticed since I've been pedaling and I'm in town with my bike all the time. And there's no way that I'm going to pedal on Main Street, which would eliminate the town to me.
Right, yeah. Well, and I agree with you, we lost a lot of courtesy. It's the same thing with skiing. When I, when I snow ski, people have forgotten on your left, on your right. I do it all the time, even on my bike, when I'm on a bike that I announce. Quite frankly, I don't want to be struck, you know, or somebody move over into you and hit you. So, so maybe it's to reach out to the school, maybe encourage, we reach out to the school to try to teach the kids the on your left, on your right program or something.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I had suggested, that a school reach out, a couple of, a couple of informal signs in town and things that we can, that we can do that would take care of the problem without making a deal out of it, you know, that, that closes off Main Street and, or makes it unsafe for, it's hard as a senior to get back on a bike again and do whatever and not ever, you know, be able to go in a straight line and we don't go as fast and stuff and, you know, so I think the education piece is important.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for getting back out there.
Like the bike. He's got to learn.
Keaton?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one final comment that I didn't add. Both Wally Pacer and I, and as everybody knows, Wally's the chair of the TNS committee, were members of Go Bike Buffalo, which is an advocacy group. And I don't know if Wally ever got back to you, Keaton. They do a lot of the education that was just being discussed. And I think the village should reach out to Go Bike and see what resources they have that we can use. Because education is one of their primary objectives.
He's on my committee, I'm on his committee.
Complete streets and stuff, so we should reach back out about an educational program with Go Bikes.
So that can go right under the top of the cat picture, you can get a bicycle picture. And it's like picture lab. And that's where people can find the resources and the links.
Right. And have a bell on your bike, you know, bring back the bell on the bike.
I actually yelled at my daughter because she ran at me once and I'm like, you have a bell.
Yeah.
That's what it's for.
You ever been to Amsterdam?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, they have it right away. I saw this industry.
And if you strike a bike even with their fault, it's your fault for you, it's your fault. So they are very pro bike.
Hi, Marilyn.
All right.
Would anyone else like to speak on the subject, the safe operations of bicycles on sidewalks? Uh, you raise your hand or, you know, just want to start over the top?
It is, yeah, I, I don't, I mean.
This is essentially borrowing the same language that we use for the park.
So, um, so is there no, okay, so there's nobody else tonight? I, I would like to propose to this board to close the public hearing and to take a vote this evening on it. Um, because we've had it open now for two meetings and I think that, you know, we've heard a lot of great comments and, and I, I see no reason why to, you know, have it out there any longer unless, unless there is a reason, I'm not aware, let me know and, you know.
Well, I guess I'm just.
I just want to, I just want to make clear to the board, I, I, I mean, you could do that, certainly. I don't know if anybody's inclined to make any changes to what has already been drafted. But you can close the public hearing tonight and not vote on it tonight, if that, that, that is an option. I mean, the, the two are not strictly linked to one another. I mean, you could keep the hearing open, you can close the hearing and not vote tonight. If you maybe wanted to make some tweaks to make it clear that e-bikes were being excluded. I'm not suggesting you should do that or not do that, that's a view, but um, or, or you can, you can close it and, and vote on it.
E-bikes fall on your left, essentially they have some type of a motor, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, 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 I think that could be an interpretation, but I think if there, if the intent would be to exclude um, e-bikes. What I might suggest is that we be clear about that and that we say that nobody shall operate a motorcycle electronically assisted bicycle, all terrain vehicle or other motorized vehicle on a public sidewalk. And then say any person operating a non-motorized bicycle on a public sidewalk shall do so in a safe manner and a prudent speed.
Right, it's taking the age out of there, because right now it's written twelve or fourteen.
Well, so it well, it says no person except for a child under twelve years of age. A handicapped individual or a village employee shall, or public official shall operate a motorcycle all terrain vehicle or otherwise motorized vehicle on a public sidewalk. I don't know why we want children.
That's why I just put the age out there, that way they're eight years old and they want to operate a motorcycle, they're able to.
I mean, not to be, I mean, it is, that, that, I mean, an legally operate a capable motorcycle. So we don't need a law to say you can't do it on the sidewalk, they can't do it, period. You need a driver's license to operate a motorcycle.
Right, right, so, so I'm assuming the individual is, is trying to scoop up those that are in motorized wheelchair.
Wheelchairs, they go very slow.
Yeah, right, but, but okay, so no person except a handicapped individual.
Correct.
Or a village employee or a public official.
What's with the village employee part?
I'm assuming that would be.
Because we want to, because the village wanted to make sure that the village could operate its snowplow and any other equipment they need to.
Well, because I like to take my all terrain vehicle. It's one of the perks of being a trustee.
It's really not an all terrain, he's got a golf cart, he likes to drive.
I do actually have a golf cart, but uh, I. Okay, uh, so yeah, I would say that those would be included, alterations.
Okay, and then, and the age too, we're not doing, okay, okay. So, so I, that's what we'll do then, Chip, we won't, we'll make the, can you?
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll, so we'll close the hearing. I, we've heard, you know, people had an opportunity to comment on this. I don't, you know, we're not radically altering it, we're responding to the comments that were made. But yeah, I think it makes more sense to let's, let me then make those changes and we'll circulate those and, and you can vote on it at the next, next board meeting. But just so I'm clear, because again, it's a little bit, so we want to take out the age and then we want to make it clear that e-bikes are.
So I just, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Okay, so we will then vote on that at our next meeting, which is October.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so um, I will make a motion then to open the second public hearing, which involves the revision of zoning district map to downgrade specific properties to R three. This public hearing was continued from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Um, so if you are interested in commenting on this, we ask that you state your name and address. And I also, everyone, we did get these hand delivered, um, and those were circulated as well. We shouldn't have a hard copy in your mailbox. And you know, right, and then um, this is just, this was the actual original one. Did you see this?
I'll second to open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Okay, anybody who'd like to speak on this matter of the revision of the zoning district map? Please raise your hand, I see we have one gentleman already. Um, so Charles Malcolm. He may uh, speak on this issue. Uh, just let uh, our village administrator know your address.
Sure, good evening, Charles Malcolm from the law firm Hodgson Russ, address is one four B Pearl Street, Buffalo, New York, one four two zero two. Thank you very much for uh, hearing our comments. I represent International Chimney, uh, the owner of seventy-six South Lawn. Uh, as was referenced at the beginning of the public hearing, um, I hand delivered two protest petitions with respect to this rezoning on Friday. And sent a follow-up email to the mayor and the board. Um, one of the protest petitions was under seven seven, seven oh eight sub paragraph one and the other under seven seven oh eight sub paragraph three. Uh, we also earlier today sent a letter, uh, my colleague Jennifer Schamberger submitted it. Um, that kind of laid out our opposition to this, and I'm going to reiterate some of those points this evening. Um, but the main issue, and you know, we have several, you know, problems with the rezoning. But the main issue is inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and targeted uh, spot zoning. I mean, here you have a circumstance where you have a piece of property that's located, uh, zoned mixed use. It's uh, consistent with the surrounding uses, it's being used in a productive way now. Um, you have uh, my client International Chimney uh, acquired the property, made an investment, um, you know, consistent with the zoning. Um, we understand that uh, the village is looking at potentially uh, expanding the park and acquiring surrounding parcels. Noted in the comprehensive plan, uh, but nowhere in the comprehensive plan does it contemplate using the zoning power to devalue the property for purposes of carrying out that acquisition. Um, at the prior uh, meeting, um, Mayor Rogers made a very astute comment about the propriety of using the zoning power on a piece of property that's been slated for acquisition. We would object to that. Um, we would note that the proposed zoning district, uh, you know, as per, as contemplated from MU to R three um, would, would result in a, in a taking. I mean, it does not comport with my client's um, investment backed expectation when acquiring the parcel. You know, the, the R three zoning district is a very low density residential district. That's not consistent with what the village has identified in that area in the comprehensive plan. Um, section five point two identifies um, this particular area as a focus area. Uh, was discussing higher uh, density residential districts. Um, you know, we believe that the current zoning uh, is consistent with the surrounding area, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And singling this parcel out and targeting it for a downgrading. And I think the public notice and, and your agenda talks about downgrading it. Um, that's going to be a significant hardship to my client. We, we object to it strenuously. Um, if the village truly wants to acquire parcels, either through negotiation or eminent domain, you know, that's a separate issue. But the zoning power should not be used uh, in this manner to reduce the value of the property. We respectfully submit that going forward with this rezoning would result in a taking. And under the recent Supreme Court precedent, the NIC case overriding Williamson would create a cause of action now. Um, we also believe that this is, this would be illegal spot zoning, um, singling out a parcel. Uh, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's directly in conflict with what was stated in the comprehensive plan. And on behalf of my client, we would respectfully request that the rezoning be rejected. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Is uh, is there anybody else who would like to address the board on this topic? Or is it revision of the zoning map? Anybody that raised their hand?
So we've come, we've actually um, had this open for a while, this public hearing, I believe it was pre-COVID. We had this initial discussion.
It was, it was last year at the tail end of um, Natali, because we were, I, I did the first presentation on the idea when we were discussing the driveway.
Right, right. So, I mean, I, I think I, this is another one, if the board's comfortable, I'd, I'd like to call, call to close the public hearing tonight. With the intent that we would do a board vote um, at our next meeting on this. Um, rather than, you know, prolonging, um, you know, unless I'm missing a reason that we shouldn't go that route. Kind of where I'm heading with it, anyone have any objections to that?
No, I, I would, I would offer that um, uh, the proposal has been floated through both planning board and the zoning board. Both voted in favor of moving in the, in the direction of the rezoning. And um, I just, for the, for the purposes of, of context, um, uh, if the, the word spot zoning was used. But that would suggest that this is an isolated zoning condition. When in fact, we're, we're talking about half a dozen different properties of multiple zones. And attempting to actually fold them into the zone that surrounds them. As to creating an isolated area of an individual property or something to that effect and that. You know, there, there is no intent to harm in this, in this action. But, you know, uh, and while it is, I think, true, the comp plan does say South Lawn District. Um, when one studies the evolution of the zoning in, throughout the village. And uh, you look at the zoning maps through time and how these things have turned over from what had previously been these commercial C zonings into MU or NMU or R three M or whatever they're called today, they've been renamed. There's been a discreet effort to maintain the boundary of those original areas. Um, primarily to avoid these types of difficult conversations. Not because there was an intent to maintain the north half of South Lawn Park as a high density mixed use multi-function. You know, parcel, but rather because it used to be a C one and now it's, it's called MU instead. Same goes for ninety-six South Lawn and one fifteen South Lawn. These, these small, tiny little parcels, these postage stamp parcels, which were always a carryover from a bygone era of commercial and industrial use in a neighborhood that is by and large no longer of commercial and industrial railroad centric use. They still just happen to have been scooped up in what used to be a C two into what's now called an NMU. Right, so I think the bigger question to consider on this topic is if you look at any one of the parcels that's being proposed to be rezoned. Whether we're talking about forty South Lawn, whether we're talking about ninety-six South Lawn, whether we're talking about seventy-six. The, the question becomes if those parcels were to be developed consistent with their current overlaying uh, zoning. Is that what's intended in the comprehensive plan? And the thing that's, that's, that's conveniently overlooked in the comprehensive plan is how it talks about strengthening green space, improving the parkland. Protecting the, the community character that's, that's around our parks. Yes, they talk about strengthening South Lawn and creating a, a, a focus area there. But um, when you look at the illustrations that are used to reinforce that text. They're showing that strengthening as a border and a buffer on the west side of South Lawn, opposite of the park, not in the park. So um, while it's true that we have a desire from a comprehensive plan point of view to create a higher density residential aspect bordering on the park. It does not envision a five-story mixed use commercial residential development sticking in the side of the park. That, that's inconsistent with the vision of comprehensive plan.
So, so my question for that is, you know, and I'm just seeking some clarification here because I wasn't a member of this board. When was that comprehensive plan written ten years ago?
Two thousand nine.
Okay, so in two thousand nine, which, you know, a lot has changed in the village in ten years. So um, I will just say that um, you know, if, if the comprehensive plan was written in two thousand nine. I guess my question would be, why wasn't, why weren't the properties that we're discussing now corrected, if you will, for lack of a better term, as far as what the comprehensive plan wanted to see in that area regarding zoning classification? So I guess, why now would be my question?
Okay, so, so there's a couple of.
Hey man, yeah, just before, sorry, I just want to make sure, again, I just want record to be clear. So the, the comp plan was adopted in two thousand and ten and it was amended in two thousand and fifty, so.
Right, yes, yeah, it's, it's a living document, but um, so there's a couple of answers to that. So like, I, I know, I speak from, you know, experience having sat on the committee that rewrote the mixed use design standards. That there was a discussion with the planning department, with planner that had been hired, I think, about where do we define the boundary of the mixed use? And there was a discussion about trying to move some of those lines at, at that time. But the, the effort to do so, um, it, it was more involved and was going to protract the adoption of mixed use standards, which was, I think, the view of the committee and the, the board at the time was it was more important to address the design standards on Main Street and establish the proper building heights and things that were desired by the community. Than it was to define whether or not Glen Park is appropriate as a mixed use property or South Lawn Park is appropriate as a mixed use property. But the truth is, is that as parkland goes, its overlying zoning is virtually irrelevant. Because it is protected by um, by state law. However, as we saw with the Natali development and the concept of the land swap. There was an effort to consolidate and aggregate what is currently known as South Lawn Park into a different property, a different shape, a different, you know, usage. And swap what was traditionally known as Darling's property away. And, and in exchange for the north side of what is currently understood as South Lawn Park along the Little Square Lane. One of the reasons why that was such a tantalizing option is that the overlying zoning of South Lawn Park is mixed use. It is a more attractive zoning in the conversation of, well, we'll give you three acres if you give us three acres. Because you're going to get three acres that you can put five story, you know, high density residential or commercial on. And isn't that swell? And meanwhile, we'll, we'll aggregate our park further south and, you know, we'll do something with it when we have the money to do so. That was one of the things that the community and the neighborhood objected to most stridently. Was the idea that we could, we could lose that parkland because it. Was the idea that we could, we could lose that parkland because it was attractive to develop. And that the village at the time had been willing and, and, and to consider the idea. And to pursue alienation of parkland through the state to make that type of a deal happen. So now that the Natali development has settled down, and it's established and we have our property lines again. The question becomes, do we want our parks, and in this case, you know, the only two left are Glen Park and South Lawn. That do not match their concurrent residential zones that surround them. Do we want them to remain with this overlying tantalizing, you know, high-density development? When in fact, it's supposed to be green space now. The follow-up to that, and the next step, what the, what the comp plan actually did identify and has yet to be done. Is the authoring of a green space, open space, recreation space zoning. Village has never had one. Town of Amherst has, has a, a rec. Zone, but we do not. And so, the question might be, well, why don't we just rezone? To, you know, open space, green space, recreation, because it doesn't exist, at least not currently. And that process is going to take a long time as well. So, the, the thought process that was recommended to us by the Parks Committee as they looked at their master planning. For so the last 16 months, 18 months. At, at the very least, what we could do is to take away attractiveness of, of these parklands that have these overlying zonings. And at least bring them down to reflect the neighborhood that wraps around them. With the manifest destiny, if you will, the, the, the ultimate goal of pursuing the writing of an open space recreation-type zoning. And getting that adopted at some later date, at which point then things like. South Lawn Park and Lehigh Trail and Island and Glen. They would then become effectively, coming back to the end of this, a spot zoning specific to that park. Now. I think the, the last comment I, I want to make is with regards to 76 South Lawn is that. I think it is true that the comp plan identifies, it's not really a secret, that the village is interested in trying to aggregate. South Lawn Park further. And if the, if, but, you know, no one has made any overture of that property. But this effort, that discussion are in my mind. If the ownership was interested in negotiating with the village on the sale of that property. I'm, I'll take that meeting. But, but for me, I don't see it as, as a, and I understand it from their perspective. I'm sympathetic to that thought process, but I don't see this as, as interrelated in that respect. Because I see it as fulfilling the role of the comp, the, the goals of the comp plan to protect our, our green space. And the, the proper development in, in, and more importantly, around our parks.
Well, so, because we could take 60 South Lawn and just change the proposal on that. Which is, which would essentially is, is one of the, the end game, our ambitions, you know, to do.
60 South Lawn?
Right, 60 South Lawn is the park, is that right?
That's, uh, yes, right, sorry, yes. But yeah, we could do, we could, we could do each one of these individually if we wanted to. There, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, but we could, we could do 60 South Lawn, we could do, what is it, 96? And then, and then 80 something is, is Lehigh.
Yeah, 86 and then 150 is the section house.
150 Milton is the section house. And so then, so then that would leave the only three properties that are not village-owned properties at this point. Which is 76 South Lawn, 100 South Lawn.
100 South Lawn, yeah.
And then 115. And, and 100 is the property that's immediately proximate to 96. It is a postage stamp of a property and is, has historically always been a one or two family dwelling. I think it would be a rental, not that matters. But when you look at the NMU district and you ask yourself. What are the developable standards built into the NMU district? What can I achieve with that code? And I apply it to that thumbprint of a, of a parcel on, on South Lawn. The answer is a one or two family house. And if that's the answer, then it's an appropriate zone, right? So that leaves us with 115 South Lawn at the corner of Parkway. Which I think is some form of a semi-commercial, it's been like a warehouse or I've heard it's a brewery or things like that. It's, it's kind of a hodgepodgey little, you know, cluster of smaller block buildings and things. But it's on a very oddly shaped little parcel. And so, if I start to look at that and I ask myself, what do I perceive being that corner? If I'm, if I'm a developer and I'm pursuing that corner as a, as a development opportunity. It's oddly shaped to the point where I can't really do much with at this point. What I'm going to do is I'm going to start buying up some of the neighboring single-family homes that are just south of me. I'm going to file for a rezoning. Then I'm going to get that, those, those single-family homes that have always been single-family homes. Upgraded to, to an NMU. Now I've got myself a decent-sized parcel and I'm going to plunk, you know, a Williams-sized residential development there. So, that's okay. I mean, that, that might be what we want. Maybe, maybe instead of downzoning 115 South Lawn, maybe we should be looking at upzoning. The balance of that, those handful of parcels that are wrapped around that little, you know, apartment complex at the end of our parkway. These are the questions that we have to ask. What's, what is, what is the intention of the comp plan? And then what is the goal of future development that that zoning is allowing to occur? Is that what we want it to be or is it want to be what it has traditionally been? There's tax incentive, there's property tax incentive on our part to. Increase the amount of multi-family high-density, you know, parcels in the village. Because we're going to recoup larger property taxes from commercial identity developments. That we will from the, the equivalent in a, of single or double family homes. But is that what's appropriate for the neighborhood? I genuinely do not believe, have you read the comp plan more times than I care to count? That, that corner parcel on 115 South Lawn was intended to be anything other than what it.
Can, can you bring that up or not? 115?
It, it's actually right behind your shoulder there.
Okay. So, I, I do think though, I, I think we can all agree, and I think that the comp plan can also agree that. You know, we should be preserving South Lawn Park. I don't think I've ever heard from a single resident that that park should be anything other than a park, including the whole Natali debacle. And the land swap that, you know, happened several years back. So, I think that, you know, you know, I'm comfortable with doing whatever we need to zoning-wise. To make that green space and to keep the park space. And, and I, and I guess it's a little disappointing that when that comp plan was written. That somebody didn't realize that there was a loophole there. Was a park that could potentially be taken, you know, that status could have been taken away from it. So, so we're here today and we understand it and let's, you know, correct it.
That was, that was well acknowledged.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear. A park with officially dedicated parkland such as South Lawn Park. Cannot be developed or put to any other use other than parkland without state legislative approval.
Right.
That land is held in public, in trust for, for the public. So, that's a, you know, I just want everybody to be clear about that. Regardless of what the comp plan may or may not have said.
Okay.
Right, and, and, you know, and to that point, I mean, the part, the, the comp plan did acknowledge those, that. It, it's, but it was the next step in executing that comp plan. Writing that NMU district, that NMU district, that R3M district. And, and making the decision at that time not to alter the boundaries of what had traditionally been. A commercial zoning or industrial zoning that predated the definition of that.
You mentioned that Glen Park was also?
Yeah, yeah, it's happened, it's happened.
But what Chip is saying, and maybe it comes just clarify, we can't, right. It doesn't matter technically what it's zoned as, is that correct? Because it's, it's parkland, it's being used as parkland, so it.
Right.
It just mattered for us to alienate, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
But it would also take two actions though. So, let's say that another land swap cannot. It would not only take alienation, but it would also take a rezoning if it needed to be upzoned. So, it would be two public hearings basically that would be required to potentially do that land swap.
Yeah, I mean, and to me.
It just makes it not easy for the village board in the future to say, yeah, why don't we swap it?
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's, again, it's removing the temptation.
Is it the village game?
Or someone just goes, man, but, um, so, yeah, um, that was, that, that was, that was all I wanted to say, sorry.
All right, good. All right, so I think, Keaton, was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this before we close it out? Because I think what I'd like to do tonight is I, and make a motion, a motion to close out the public hearing. Like I said, as Trustee E2 has said, it's been quite a while. And then, at our next meeting on October 26th, we should have a full board here. We're also missing a board member this evening, and then we would take a vote on it on October 26th. Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, but, but go ahead, go, go, go ahead and vote on the closing the public hearing. I just want to talk a little bit about procedure in light of the protest petition.
Right, right. Okay, so there's nobody else then, Keaton, is it? Okay, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the revision of the zoning district map. To downgrade specific properties to R3. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Chip, do you want to?
So, yeah, I, I just want to let the board know. So, so the owner of, of 76 South Lawn International Chimney has filed protest petitions both under. There, there's three different provisions under section 7708 of the village law that authorizes protest petitions. And the significance of a valid protest petition is that it would require a three-quarters affirmative vote. To adopt the zoning amendment as opposed to a simple majority. I just want to note that the, the petitions on their face do not provide any calculations. For, to back up the assertion that they represent 20% of the property either to be rezoned. Or, or immediately opposite the area to be rezoned. I'm, and so therefore, we're going to have to perform that analysis. And I can certainly do that before the next board meeting. But right now, sitting here right now, I'm, I can't tell you whether those protest petitions actually represent the 20% that's required. Just because they say they do, doesn't mean that they do, and, and there's an analysis that needs to be performed. The, the 20% of the area to be, within the area to be rezoned, that's a very simple calculation. The claim that, that the two properties represent 20% of the, of the properties within 100 feet of the area. Opposite of it is a much more complicated calculation, given the irregular shape of the area that's supposed to be rezoned, so. I, I, so that, that's going to have to be calculated before I can give the board any. My analysis, I guess, of whether or not those protest petitions trigger the supermajority requirement or not.
Okay, I should say you have an answer for us before we go to vote on October 26th, because then.
Yeah, yeah, and, and all I would say is if the applicant wants to submit some calculations of how they calculated that. Certainly be happy to consider those, but nothing on the face of those petitions provided any sort of calculation.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll see what you have had for us at the next meeting and we'll go from there when we vote, obviously. Okay, so the third public hearing that we have this evening involves the TNVR. So, I will make a motion to open the public hearing on the code revision to TNVR and feeding of community cats. I can, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so if you have, would like to comment on the TNVR feeding of community cats. You can go ahead and raise your hand or put something in the chat box and Keaton will go ahead and oversee that. And as Trustee E2 mentioned earlier, for those who are looking to comment this evening. I think the board has come to a consensus here in our preliminary discussion that we're not looking to get rid of. The TNVR laws that currently stand in the village of Williamsville. We're just looking to make it enforceable. And I think we had some really good ideas that we discussed earlier about making, educating the public and making that connection, so.
So, yeah, I guess, so to that, to that point then, I guess we would ask that, you know. If, if you're here to speak on this topic this evening, then, you know. Speaking in opposition to rescinding the law is unnecessary. We're really looking more for recommendations and guidance for how better to go about executing the law in such a way. That we're not just encouraging people, but we're actually. You know, dealing with those who, in, in, what, for the. Back up for a second. What got us here was that an individual in the village was not participating in TNVR. And so we did receive many impassioned communications from people who are much in favor of the TNVR process. And, and, you know, made many valid points advocating for it. And, and to that end, then I would say that the situation we're in is, is what happens when an individual doesn't participate? And how do we either encourage that person to participate? Or circumvent their lack of participation so that their neighbors are not suffering the consequences of their bad action?
All set, thank you.
Would, uh, anyone want to speak on this topic after hearing from the board and their redirection of the issue?
Um, hi, this is Edie Offhouse. And I am with Feral Cat Focus of Western New York. Right here, located right in your community. And I just wanted to throw out some numbers so the people of Williamsville can get a better idea as to what we might be looking at. I thought it would be nice if they could see their numbers and what the, the good work that they're doing. And this is strictly, the numbers that I'm going to give you tonight are strictly for the village. And these are the numbers that have been compiled by Feral Cat Focus. And we compile these numbers by people contacting us, calling, getting their cats in for spaying and neutering. And the work we do in assisting them in any way we can. So, the numbers are quite interesting and I'll read them off for you. There are 26 caregivers in the village of Williamsville since 2014. That's the numbers we have right now. 19 of those caregivers in the village of Williamsville have altered cats in the past. Two and a half to three years. So, 19 of those caregivers have altered their cats in the past two and a half to three years. Out of that 19 caregivers that have altered their cats. 42 cats have been altered in the village of Williamsville in the past two and a half to three years. Now, considering the average size of a residential colony is approximately four to six. Now, I say residential, it's like I always have to explain this. This isn't rural, we're not talking farmlands or out farther, but we're talking a residential area. Are approximately four to six cats. Now, some people may have 10, some people may have one. But it's generally within that range. The average size of a litter of kittens for one female is four to six kittens. All right, that's the average size of her litter. Taking 19 caregivers and altering 42 cats in the past two and a half to three years only. I took times five kittens on the average. And that will be 210 kittens that were never born in Williamsville under the TNVR program. and that will be 210 kittens that were never born in Williamsville under the TNVR program. An unaltered female averages two litters per season. If you want, but in most cases it is two litters, spring and then later in the summer. Now, if you do the math on that, the numbers start to really go up. So if you, if you go back to two and a half to three years for these cats having two litters a year, you can't, you can barely even do the numbers because their litters would be having litters, would be having litters. So the two and a half to three years, you'd be compiling all these litters of cats and kittens coming up. So I think that the village of Williamsville has done a phenomenal job in keeping your numbers down for your cats. Your, your community cats, the feral cats, the feral free roaming cats, street cats, community cats, whatever you want to call them. So I think you've done an excellent job on it. Keep up the good work. If Feral Cat Focus can be of any assistance to any of you, call our number. Our number is available. All you have to do is call our 1-88 number, 902-9717. Put you in touch with one of our caregiver, or one of our phone volunteers, and they will start to direct you as to what needs to get done. We're here as a resource, we've always been here. Please feel free to contact us if there's any questions you have. We're here for the trustees, the board, we're here for the residents. And unless someone has any other questions for me, those are the numbers that I can give you right now. I do want to make mention one thing. One of the complaint, the person that was being complained upon, okay, was not doing TNVR. However, now she is fully doing TNVR, she only has two more cats to go. She's done a wonderful job, she has complied with everything, her feeding is great. The health department has said her feeding is, is compatible to what they expect. We're in very good shape there, and I'm glad we were able, and her cooperation has been wonderful. And we are hats off to that lady and her family. So thank you very much, and unless someone has any further questions, I'll turn it over to whomever. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, next we have Kim Connolly.
Hey there, my name is Kim Connolly, and I live at 164 Erin here in the village. We have a short PowerPoint, and I know that we've been through this and we're not planning on, on eliminating TNVR, but I'd love to put in the record just a few slides, there are only 10 slides, and have our student attorney who's worked so hard at this have a chance to present for people who are new to TNVR, especially since while there are not all that many people here tonight, there are people who watch this on video later, if you wouldn't mind, and Keaton has our, has our presentation, is that okay?
Yes, sure.
Terrific. So I'm going to turn it over to Kate Fleming, who is our student attorney.
Hello, this is Kate Fleming, and my name, I am a student attorney at the University of Buffalo. Honored to be speaking with you and continuing the work of other student attorneys before me who have worked on law with the university's animal clinic. And looking at the slides, I will just quickly go through the background on trap neuter vaccinate return before handing it over to Professor Connolly. And regarding the goals of TNVR, the goal is to manage community cat populations in a safe and humane way. And that is the cats are trapped, neutered, or spayed, vaccinated, and returned to the location where trapped. And this helps to avoid exponential population growth and to reduce some nuisance behaviors, you could say. Erie County passed a resolution whereby the legislature supported the practice of TNVR and has encouraged municipalities to pass laws encouraging TNVR. And this law was passed in 2014 and amended in 2019 to include best feeding practices. So highly, a couple of points in the slides, the law requires no expenditure by the village, and TNVR is implemented on a voluntary basis. And again, this was revisited and updated in 2019. And then, and I think there's a quote from the ICMA on the PowerPoint presentation. And so I, I will leave you with that quote. So, "Few animal-related issues facing local leaders are potentially more difficult and time-consuming than those involving unowned, free-roaming cats in the community. Complaints or concerns regarding cats often represent a disproportionate share animal-related calls to elected officials and local animal care and control agencies." I will hand over to Professor Connolly.
Thank you very much, Kate. So I just am going to, I'm just going to say how we got here today and then, and then kind of celebrate where we're going. So if we go to the next slide, or did you turn off the slides entirely?
Well, it's still on.
So then if we go to the, I think, I think, because I was changing my window, I can't do it. So then if we go to the next slide, there's been, there's been some complaints, they're all kind of focused on one space. So we went ahead as lawyers and did a freedom of information law. And Judy was kind enough to send us information saying that there really was one focus area, as we've talked about earlier today. And so we have that, and then if you just go to the next slide, you can see that, that, that there was some, some expenditure of effort to go out and take care of seeing what's going on there, and that was something that we really appreciated happening. And, and, and wanted to share that there was a problem, it seems to be one problem. And so if we just go to the next slide, then, then, then we kind of come to where we were going to come to, but I'm going to add to this slide, which is in the conversation in the work session, we were saying, we don't want to get rid of the law. It's been, as, as Edie's numbers show, a great boon to the village to be one of the first in Western New York and the first village in Western New York to, to adopt this law in 2014 in compliance with the recommendation of Erie County. So that's pretty great. It, you've got a successful program in place, you've got this single known situation, but as, as we've heard, it has pretty much been addressed, it's close to being addressed. And there are resources, as we've heard. You've got Feral Cat Focus, I, Beth Shapiro is, is here from SPCA, and I think we'll be just speaking to make sure that you know that there, that, that SPCA remains at the ready to, to stand here, Erie County SPCA. And the Animal Law Clinic is here to help do whatever analyses. One of the things that you were thinking about was, let's figure out how to do enforcement better. Would there be a way of coming up with a registry? Would there be a way of doing some sort of website that would provide people resources? And we have volunteered to go and do some research on that. And I'm pretty excited that we're going to be able to, to do that because what you've got here is you've got the best governance practices. And so keeping on doing that and then allowing us to go out and see what some of the other people who've been doing this for a while as well have come up and maybe also talking to or working with people who talked to the town of Amherst, coming up with some ways of keeping your best practices in place and making them even stronger and less of a burden, although as you read from the International City County Management Association, this is an area that's never going to be perfect, it does take a little bit of effort from, from the part. But doing the trap neuter vaccinate return really is best for everyone. So thank you very much for this opportunity to speak here tonight. And thank you to Kate for preparing to be part of the student attorneys who've worked on this and, and going to be working on some further research on this and be ready. We are, we stand ready to be called upon to do continued work. And I stand ready to wave at all of you when I'm walking our dog in the neighborhood around the village.
Thanks, good.
Thank you.
So anybody else who might, might to speak on this, this new issue? Oh, not new issue, but redirected issue. Not seen anyone.
Okay, so are we looking then to close this public hearing tonight? Yes.
Yeah, I think we have to because whatever, whatever we're going to ultimately do is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee Tori has agreed to, to be speaking about.
Up with the presentation.
With the town and all that, and with Groundhog Focus.
Yeah.
Do we have to, do we have to vote?
No, because we would be bringing up a change to our current code.
Yeah.
I know, but we, we were having this public hearing to rescind that law, right?
It was a vision, I don't, I would consider it a vision.
Chip, did you have to vote tonight to not rescind it?
No, 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 if you don't want to move forward, first of all, nothing's been drafted. There's nothing to vote on. And I don't recall what exactly the, because I didn't prepare the public hearing notice. I don't know if it expressly said to repeal the TNVR program or if it just said to make changes to Article 8 regarding TNVR. I, Judy would have to answer that question, I think. But at any rate, there's no local law has been drafted, so there, there's nothing to be voted on right now. I think there's a question of whether you want to just keep this public hearing open as in for me.
Regarding code revision to TNVR feeding of community cats?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good, awesome. Great.
That was very productive, thank you.
Yeah, you got, but you, you've had some experience with it.
Yeah.
And we knew more than most of us coming into this initially when we discussed it, so. Okay, so next we'll move into the budget rules for public participation, and this is your opportunity to address any issues or concern you might have in the village of Williamsville. And I will ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you can start off by stating your name and address and raise your hand and/or access the chat box and let us know that you would like to speak. Mr. Dupree, so I'll let you go ahead and run the show.
Sure, so right now.
Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Motion to, motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend, second, budget rules for public participation.
All in favor?
Aye, you chose to, you too. I always look to jump, like, jump right in there. What do you, what do you have to say? Alright.
Always eager to hear what the public has to say.
Good right to it, right?
So Nick Roth, his hand raised, so we'll start with him.
Well, thank you, Nick Roth, 135 Oak Grove. Coming back to one of my favorite topics, back in April or so during the last public hearing on the budget, I asked what the board was going to do proactively as the pandemic was really beginning to take effect and anticipating decreased revenue from sales tax, mortgage tax, et cetera. A couple of weeks ago on the Morning News Show, I saw Amherst Town Supervisor Culpa standing in front of Amherst Town Hall with Brian Higgins off his left shoulder, talking about the drastic negative impact and the draconian tax cuts that are going to have to, or tax increases be put into place if Washington doesn't step up to the plate. Erie County Executive Poland Cars is saying the same thing. We had a tax increase in the village this year. Things do not look good in Washington, there is not a bailout plan. So my ultimate question is, what steps are you taking now to prepare for next year's budget, knowing that these numbers, the, you know, the, the fairy dust from Washington may not show up, and there's going to be some shortfall? Thank you.
So I'll, I'll start off with an answer on that, or somewhat of an answer. I will just say that, you know, every year that we sit down with our budget, we start that in February. I don't really know what other fat we're going to be trimming off as we move forward. We, we sit here for many hours, and we usually have to reconvene on an additional night to sit for several more hours and try to, you know, whittle down what savings we can off of the budget. You know, insurance costs have gone up every year that I've sat on this board. That's something that we have no control over. Retirement benefits also continue to go up, once again, something that we have no control over. We've had several New York State mandates. A mandate is something that is mandated, just as it sounds, by New York State that we're required to do with no financial support to adhere to those mandates. So I can't answer you today, looking ahead to when we sit in February and try to figure out this budget, because I don't know where we're going to be at and what more we're possibly going to look at cutting. But I, but I, on the side of that, I will say that, you know, and I'll let Administrator Pinguin speak to this because it's more her wheelhouse, certainly than mine. You know, I would like her to maybe talk a little bit about the sales tax, which seems to be something that everyone's buzzing about, sales tax being down and how it's affecting municipalities. So Judy, if you could just touch base on that and maybe talk a little bit about what percentage of sales tax we actually count on in our village budget?
Sure. The village budget, budgets for sales tax revenue, and it's about 19 and a half percent of the total budget. We just got our most recent dispersment from the county for our sales tax. And based on comparison to last year for the same time period, we were about 9% lower than what we received last year for the same period. When we did the budget, our budget number this year as compared to what was received totally last year, we were probably about 20% below what we actually received. So we should be okay this year if we continue on the same path that we currently are on. We also just were notified that a lot of the additional spending that we had for the COVID-19 expenses, we are being reimbursed by the county through the CARES Act dispersment, reimbursement program. So that was a good thing. I think we're getting about $36,000 for, for that. So we continue to watch everything that we spend, and, you know, we're trying to be careful and, and hopefully our, like Deb said, our insurance and our retirement seem to go up each year more than our 2%. And I've been here for 12 years, and for, I would say, at least 10 of those years, we have stayed within the, the limits of what the governor wants us to stay in. And I think that we only had two years, one of which was the year where we did the elimination of the water fund. And the second was last year because we just, we kept cutting and cutting, and we really needed to finance some things out of the budget. So we're hoping to have another good year, and time will tell.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, and I appreciate those comments. However, as a retired small business owner, I faced a lot of the similar challenges. Increasing health insurance costs, I had a defined benefit pension plan, which I recognize can be an albatross, and Judy, I think you've always done a fantastic job, and I appreciate.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, there's, there's, there's got to be, I'm not saying the better focus, but I don't know what the focus is. The one thing I did not have was the New York State mandates foisted upon me. So, but as, as a taxpayer, I am concerned. Well, thank you for those honest, candid remarks.
I was going to say too, you know, we have spreadsheet as well, it's an Excel spreadsheet on the sales tax. And I think over the year, we're actually only down 3.9% of one today. So it may balance itself out by the end of the year, and then we won't be really hit that hard. So it may be cutting some things towards the end as we get closer, but I think for now.
Right, but I mean, just to, to put that in perspective, though, if we round that number four.
Yeah.
We round Judy's number for what we depend on for revenue of 19.5 to 20. Then we're really talking about 4% of 20%, which is an age of a percent, right? So it's a small number, or eight tenths of a percent, right? So we're, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a very, very minute quantity. And so from that perspective, amazingly, for one of the few, few times, it's actually advantageous to be us from a financial point of view.
Yeah.
The issues with sales tax in Erie County are, are not going to be a burden, a huge burden for the village residents from a tax perspective, the way they would be from the town, where the town is. massively dependent upon it, and the county in the same way. And the bigger the government gets, the bigger the problem. So mercifully for us, we are not that dependent on sales tax. And so I, the other thing I would say is that, I know for my sake, with the exception of the playground and like, you know, doing the roof at DPW and things, we have seriously curtailed our general spending activities this year. Specifically, I think, with the idea of putting that away for that rainy day. Because when we get to February, there will be a reckoning. And I'm just, I think we're, we're making concerted thoughts to soften that blow because the hope being that with the combination of a low tax, the sales tax revenue and the fact we haven't spent a lot of money, we should find ourselves balancing out better next year than we have in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Right, and I, and I think I'm going to hearken back to the budget meeting and I believe you said this trustee to, where you talked about, you know, if we are simply existing as a village to just like open the door every morning and lock the door at night and not give our residents something a little bit more than just the building being open from eight-thirty to four, then why are we here? I, I have asked myself that question. I know trustees who has posed it to us also at budget time. You know, the playground that recently went in is a huge hit for anyone who hasn't been there. And it was something that was long, long overdue at Island Park, that is for certain. To have our village park and the, and the bathroom over there was just still being rehabbed in that condition is simply unforgivable.
But also, but mercifully done with seventy percent grant money.
Oh, absolutely, done with grant money. So it wasn't like as though we were just throwing this money into the wind and taking it all out of, you know, the village residents. But, but this is a board that I will say that, you know, looked for years and years of not going over that tax cap because it didn't look good. And this board decided that we were here for a bigger purpose, other than to just keep the lights on in the building all day and then turn them off at four-thirty. And that's led us to make some of the decisions that we've made.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Would anybody else like to speak during suspension of rules?
Got to remember roll at the sidewalks.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're rolling the sidewalks at night. That was that, you said, we're only here to turn the lights on, close the lights and roll at the sidewalks. Should be laughing. And it was really, it was really poignant to me because, you know, I want to be a village for more than just to keep the lights on during the day, so.
Anybody else?
There is no one else.
All right, motion to close suspension.
Motion to close the suspension, close the public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's get into the agenda, reports and resolutions. I actually have one report and it's more of a thank you. I would like to thank Unaland Development Corporation. They sent a group of volunteers out to South Lawn Park last Friday. Was that right, Keaton?
Right.
Last Friday, to help clean up the pavilion at South Lawn Park and some of the weed wells, what are those? Water retention.
Water retention.
Water, I'm sorry, water retention. By as well as.
Rain guard.
Rain guard.
Yes, I, I, you know.
They're actually very nice.
They don't really nice, but they get very, they need to be cleaned up very regularly. So, so they did it, they hit as much as they could with the time that they were allowed. But I really, you know, I, I'm very grateful that they showed up and I, I love that program. So here's a corporation that gives its employees time off out of the office. They were here from nine to four on Friday and allows them to go out and serve their community and improve their community. And so I really like that corporate, you know, idea, that ideology, if you will. And I welcome any other corporations out there who might hear this message this evening to, if you have employees that you have that type of program, call me, please.
Can we have, have them out again, or is this just a one-time thing?
No, we're gonna, I, so I spoke with, I, I was in touch with Michelle Walter over there and she, I believe, helps to coordinate all of this. And I, you know, I'd love to have them out as, as much as they like to come out because there's always, you know, many hands make light work.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we'll keep that conversation open. She knows to reach Keaton and myself and you know, hopefully we can get more companies and corporations to, you know, incentivize their employees that way and do those types of projects.
Great.
Yeah, so it was fun. So for reports, then, I am going to make a motion to approve resolutions number one and two as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number three, I'd like to read, it's to approve training sessions for the Planning and Architectural Review Board. So whereas members of the Planning and Architectural Review Board of the Village of Williamsville are required by state and or local law to complete four hours of training each year to more effectively carry out their duties, required land use training. And whereas the enabling statutes mandating this required land use training further provide that such training be approved by the Board of Trustees. And whereas trustee Matthew E. Two, a professional engineer and village attorney Charles Greco, together will provide five one-hour sessions of refresher courses on the following topics dates to be determined. The MU Design Standards, the NMU Design Standards, R3M Design Standards, the Sign Code, and the Seeker. Resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the members of the Planning and Architectural Review Board, along with other village land use boards and other appropriate staff and officials, to participate in the training sessions and certifies that such participation in each course shall satisfy one hour of the required land use training.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I really, I really like that because you're kind of taking a step back and making sure that those members who are seated on the planning board are understanding, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the, this is, this is what they're regulating. And, and so, you know, obviously now I have four hours worth of presentations to make, but the, my, in my mind's eye, what I see happening is, is, you know, sort of building a a representative project for them in each one of these districts based on the way the code's written. And, you know, looking at it from a high level, but also kind of a, you know, trying to get down to a nitty gritty level, too, to say like, you know, this is how you arrive. This is where you start, this is how a designer arrives at these sort of design solutions that they come to you with. And, and, and what is your, your role in understanding these, these codes? Because no one should know them better than you. And then, and then, you know, obviously I'm not, as a, as a site designer and a building designer, I can only talk at a much higher level to the architectural review side of it. But a lot of that, I'll try to cover more generally. But, you know, I think there's an opportunity moving forward to do these with some more regularity, rather than just looking for, you know, the Planning Federation to offer classes for these things. But like, maybe it would be us to bring in, you know, someone who can do more of an architectural review thing for maybe all of them, because they're all basically the same from that perspective. And that, that'll be something else. Now, what the, what the planning board talked about at the last meeting was the idea of maybe trying to squeeze these in either on nights when they don't already have an agenda. So like, their, like, their next meeting is currently on, on schedule. So like, they could just take that date, we'll do it then. Or maybe doing it as an hour before as part of their work session. That way they're already a panel anyway. And, you know, people are welcome to come and, you know, it's a public thing, learn.
Very important, and I agree.
Yeah, good. Good, well, thank you for that, going that extra mile.
I, I also just want to just point out again, by, by its terms, the resolution, this was geared largely towards and came out of a discussion with the Planning and Architectural Review Board, that this authorizes all the land use boards to use this training. And I, I think some of it, well, basically all of this, certainly the Seeker and the design standards would also be highly relevant to the ZBA. So I think we should encourage them to, to take advantage of this, these as well. Sign Code, they don't get, that doesn't really go to the ZBA much. And the HBC also requires this sort of training that the design standards are not really going to be applicable to them, but the, and they don't, a lot of what they do is exempt from Seeker, but they could still benefit from some of this as well, so. I, I just think it, the, the more people we can get doing these in-house trainings, the better.
Yep.
Okay, so I actually would like to make a motion to go off agenda for two resolutions that don't appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the first resolution involves what we talked about earlier, the tent permit fees. Resolved that due to the coronavirus pandemic, the village board previously approved the extension of the outdoor seating permits through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And now therefore be it resolved that the village board will waive the tent permit fees for the period through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, to match the outdoor seating permit extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number two involves a new hire. This is for the front office has been lacking a hire in there for, for some time now. And so Administrator Kindren and the Treasurer Pascoe, and I believe Community Development Director De Priest, at some point, all sat in for various interviews for this position. And so an offer has been made. So the resolution is that resolved that Kimberly F. Lasker of thirty-two, thirty-five Tonawanda Creek Road, Amherst, is hereby appointed full-time, thirty hours per week, as the Senior Account Clerk typist at a rate of sixteen forty-eight an hour with a start date of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. This is an Erie County civil service position, so Ms. Lasker is hired provisionally until the time this exam is given and she meets the requirements of Erie County Civil Service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the staff and the clerk's office appreciates your passing of this resolution.
And I, and I, I want to extend a thank you to the staff in the office for, you know, there's been slack, obviously left behind because this position's been vacant for a while. So I just want to thank them for picking up because between that and, you know, the coronavirus pandemic, it, it hasn't been easy. So thank you for that. Okay, so I will make a motion to return to the regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want me to take, basals resolutions?
I was going to ask you if you, if you would. So, all right, so I'm off in reports and resolutions. Deputy Mayor Piazza is not here this evening and asks trustee Yates to take over basals.
As you can see, their mural is almost finished, so we hope to have that finished this week. So we're excited for everybody to be a part of the fun of that. Taking yourself, he's in the park, and can't wait for next year when all the new flowers come in and everything. So special thanks to all that. If you weren't aware, that mural was dedicated from all the funds raised from the years of doing the garden walk. So to all those people who have helped throughout the years, we certainly appreciate your help in making this become a reality in the village. Tree Board is, we have been out for our trees, so the trees should be going in hopefully by the end of October. And I think we're looking at around fifty-one to fifty-three trees. So the quotes have come in, so hopefully we can award that in the next couple of days and get that going. Youth and Rec is going to be doing a Halloween-type thing with the farmer's market in conjunction with farmer's market. So more information about that coming up. So we're trying to spread it out so we can keep everybody safe and have it operate during the farmer's market and to be part of that whole fun here in the village. So, so keep posted about that. Diversity Committee, we've formed and I've got four active members now. We're trying to set a date for our first meeting, so hopefully we'll do that in the next week or two and I'll keep you guys posted on what we come up on that committee. That's all I've got for now. The one resolution that we carried over from Mr. Piazza's. So, one second. And it is, this actually involves the CARES Act. So the result that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the county of Erie to participate in the CARES Act local government distribution as per the attached contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all, head mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yates. And so the next for his reports and resolutions is trustee E. Two.
I have no reports this evening. I have two resolutions, both sort of on the same vein, just doing some cleanup. Resolved that the village Williamsville is hereby authorizing the disbanding of the Island Park Playground Bill Steering Committee as their function has been completed. Many thanks go out to the dedicated and hard work of the members of this committee and the many volunteers that came out to make this playground a reality.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's the wrong word. And then my other solution, um, resolved that the village Williamsville is hereby authorizing the disbanding of the War of Eighteen Twelve Field Hospital Committee as their function has been completed. Many thanks go out to the dedicated members of this committee and research they provided.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for me this evening.
All right, and thank you trustee E. Two. And next for her reports and resolutions is trustee Tori.
I don't believe I have any, right? I'm confused.
You don't have any, you don't have any resolutions, so that'd be on a great reports if you wanted to give any committee updates at this time or that, that's usually what we give during reports or anything else.
Well, I did take off with the chairman of the Glen Park Joint Board. And we did walk through Glen Park and discussed the one issue that came by the person who wrote the letter about the weeding of Glen Park. And I agreed with her. There were a lot of areas that were not weeded, but Chairman Warren explained to me that it was because during COVID that DPW had limited personnel
They did.
to come out and work in the, in Glen Park and therefore it was, looks as it does. But with the seasons changing, it's all dying down anyway, so hopefully next year we can pick up, you know, right from the start. And possibly we thought we would meet with Mr. Malone during one of our meetings in the spring, so we can just discuss things like being and tree trimming and such things, basically. But overall, the park looks good. We also discussed possibly painting the one side of the nature null center as a mural. And we'd like to look into that. And the nature playground was well-attended when I walked the area during the week. So that's it, Glen Park. Anyway, we'll need new gutters, but we'll discuss that during, yeah, exactly. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you trustee Tori. Staff reports, Administrator Kindren.
Nothing for me.
Preach, Villainen.
Leaf season is in full swing. Just want to reiterate to people not to place their piles in the street, keep them on your right of way. Don't obstruct any drainage with your piles. And please try to keep your sticks out of them. That makes the job a lot more efficient for all of us. And that means the leaves get off your yard sooner. Other than that, not too much else. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Deputy Treasurer Pascoe.
At this time, mayor.
Attorney Greco.
Nothing this evening.
Community Development Director De Priest.
Actually, something just came to mind when I was listening to trustee Tori. So in the past forty months, we've opened two parks, nature play, I'm sorry, new, new playgrounds, nature play and the one at Island Park. And we've also, we'll be opening to the public a seventeen hundred square foot mural on the side of this building. So lots happened in fourteen months, a lot of really good, nice settings to really complement the community.
That's a very great observation. So even though some things have come to screeching halt, we've managed to keep things moving along and completed, you know, in that timeframe.
Try to put a smile on some people's face.
That's right.
When you can't go anywhere, at least you have something in your backyard to enjoy.
Which is why parks are so important.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because.
We're very fortunate. We probably have one of the highest per capita of. We're very fortunate. We probably have one of the highest per capita of villages within the village. Between that and your salons, we definitely score very high on.
Especially you have the size of our little village.
I know it is. It's crazy.
Speaking of parks, what, somebody had said to me that all the table picnic tables at Garrett Park were flipped over this morning. Do we know, like, what happened with that? Almost like we were closing the park.
Something, I don't know, it's strange. They were all flipped over.
That sounds like shenanigans to me.
Shenanigans.
Yeah.
That's, I'm gonna say shenanigans.
Yeah, shenanigans. If you can go back and look at the cameras, I don't, I, that kind of stuff happens all the time.
Oh, does it really?
Yeah, people are jerks.
That's right.
Okay. All right, so I think I covered all the staff. We have nothing for executive session. So as I said, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll hop right back into work session where we left off. So that takes us to Basil's. And here, Trustee E. Two.
I got nothing.
Trustee Tori.
Okay, I have to talk about the gutter request.
Yeah.
Okay, when I did go to the name, the Knoll Nature Center with Mr. Warren, the chairman, we were greeted there actually by Ryan from the DPW. And he explained that the way the building is, it has no gutters and the rainwater repels off of the roof onto the cement and is already creating divots. And none of that's gonna be a problem in the winter with ice formations. And he highly recommends we put on the Knoll Nature Center ASAP.
Okay, next time, please talk to me, not Ryan. Please, Eileen, in the future. And then second, a little history, the Knoll Nature Center needs a roof. And in, I've provided, I can't tell you how many quotes to Mr. Warren and the committee over the past several years. So first, let's get a roof on it, then we'll get the gutters on. So Pete knows this.
Where's the, so. Where's the price at this point then?
Ah, geez, we were up to about sixty thousand, forty-five to sixty, depending on the range of who you were talking to because it's prevailing wage. And there was talk about doing it under CBDG grant, which, you know, jack the price up and you can't get a roofer who wants to work under, you know, federal wage rates. So.
Is that for an actual roof, that pricing or for metal?
No, that was, that was worth that roof, yes.
It's crazy.
That is crazy.
Why is it so expensive?
Welcome to government.
Because it's prevailing wage, because it's a very small job, and because the last several times we've requested prices, it was under the assumption that it would be paid for with CDBG money, Community Development Block Grants, and that puts you into another class of roofer altogether. So.
And it's inherently an expensive roof just because of its shape. It's all rich.
So what do we do then? The problem with.
Like the bullet.
Yeah, so obviously. What's that?
We have to be willing to pay the, straight up without getting grant money for it. So, you know.
From my perspective, and not to argue with you.
Keep in mind, fifty percent.
Gutters are cheap and easy and, and the, the building has never had them. This is the first time I'm hearing major complaints about it.
Well, you know, that's the first time that you've been able to enter it from any side.
Yeah, and you look at it and it's, you know, it's not an immediate crisis issue. There's a little bit of a divot. It hasn't washed away the entire grass. So it's on priority level right now.
Yeah, I will say.
We'll slap some gutters up on it and, you know, just, you know, discharge them out. But really, the issue here is that they need to have a roof on the building.
And they don't have enough money, so. But they're.
As a former chairperson.
Sorry. I was just gonna say that their fund balance isn't high enough to cover the cost of the roof currently.
Now that it's open, you know.
It's different.
It's different. It's very different. It was closed, you know, the water just rappelled and then nobody was there.
And that divot, that divot around the perimeter has always been there.
But now.
No, yeah.
But now I know a lot of people are using it.
Of course.
They're meeting in there and.
My, my concern is that without gutters, at least, I know we, I was gonna say to them is I know we're gonna waste gutters, if you will, if we replace the roof in two or three years, you're gonna lose the gutters.
But I think it's worth doing because I know from my years of doing winter best in that building, that floor is slick as ice. So I can imagine ice building up on the edges as it drips and drips onto the edge of the ice. Even without ice on it, it's just slippery when it's wet.
Yeah, and you know, and the thing.
And here we go.
Gutters.
We've created ourselves another maintenance issue with this too, no matter what, because we're gonna have to maintain the entire pathway in the park while it's closed during the winter.
Yep. That's, that's what that sign that says slippery in the winter mean.
No, but you're right. He is right, because that is why, didn't we put up like slippery winter conditions may apply here or something?
Yeah, both in the village.
Last.
It's not.
Oh, it wasn't there. It's not there now.
Last year, there was a complaint that in the winter, the pathways were icy and that it was slippery. So we said, we put up a sign that said beware, winter.
Winter conditions may be present.
Welcome to Buffalo.
Yeah.
But because, because we don't maintain any of the paths in Glen Park.
Right. So I would say.
Back to, back to the gutters. I'm sorry, Eileen. Request has been made. If the village board would like to have gutters on Knoll Nature Center, we'll get on it.
I think for safety reasons.
I think we need. All right, we'll put them on.
Good.
And then there were other requests though from Mr. Warren.
Sure there were.
Oh, you should show us here.
Okay, one was there's a vent that leads into the, should have been bathrooms, but now there's storage rooms. And the squirrels like going into the vent and living in there. So he liked the vent removed. Or I told him just to put some steel wool in there for now, which works by the way, but those vents have to be removed so the squirrels cannot access the storage areas. Is that all right?
That's fine.
And then the other request he had was removal of the alarm system, which works and it was tested. And it rang for twenty minutes and nobody came out, not even a neighbor.
Oh, I could tell you all about that. That's like an initiation. Did you know that?
Yeah. He pays.
I am. Wait a moment.
Oh, yeah. So I think, if I can take a moment here, I think, I think I had just gotten onto the village board as a trustee and I, and I had the key for the Glen Park, you know, for the Knoll Building. And I believe I went over there to, I think it was Bob Kreider. And nobody told me that there was an alarm system on the building, so I go in there, open the key and the space starts blaring. And much like you, it blared for about twenty minutes and nobody batted an eyelash there. People just walking, you know, big sound, you know, so.
And it's not, it's not wired to anything. It's just, it's just a siren.
It's just a siren.
Yeah, an annoying siren. So.
So it could, it should.
He, he says it should be removed. What do you think, Ben?
Yep, we're in the process of other electrical upgrades in the space and we can get rid of it.
Lights are being upgraded, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
With, oh yeah, that was a question we had with, they wanted to be replaced by LED lights. And somebody during the meeting had a question about the LED lights per se. I mean, because some are very bright and some are less bright, but they all have different connectors. Now, they wanted to make sure that you're hired Zacher Electric to put in the electric. Are they doing the right thing with the right light bulbs? That was the major concern. Is Zacher Electric doing the right installation for the right bulb that would fit it to make it bright enough? You know what I'm saying? Because they come in all different formats.
Yeah, I'm aware there are many colors and wattages and brightnesses of the LED lights. I've, I've told them multiple times that the example is the light on the shed on the north side, south side of Glen Ave, next to the handicap parking lot. I've talked to Pete and Bob multiple times this. I don't know who's raising the question.
Well, they all did, meeting. They all did. Nobody had any.
What, I guess what specifically is the issue with the connector on the lights?
Well, they were just concerned with, because some LED lights do not illuminate areas enough, you know, they're just so weak. They wanted to make sure it was the right type, but the right type has a different mount than what, I don't know.
I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't, I have, I can't, I'm sorry. Who, if the individual raising the question would like to talk to me, you know, directly, we can do that. And again, I'll repeat that the light on the shed is the, the light that we've discussed and the brightness. So if that's not adequate, then I, I would like, no.
Look at that light.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like Ben, like they want to make sure it's bright enough, but when you do get it bright enough, connection is a strange connection or something. I don't know.
Yeah, you ever bought LED lights and somebody take them home and you put them in your lamp and you don't get?
Yeah.
Yeah, it happens.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
That's what I'm talking about.
The right bulb.
But I would say too, it's like, they probably won't have to be replacing it. It'll be, you can replace the bulbs anyway. So if you put in a crazy bulb, it's your fault, right then?
It's, it's a complete head replacement.
See?
It's not a bulb. It's the complete head ballast and, and individual bulbs that come with the head.
Okay.
It's not like they're screwing a light bulb in the, the existing lights there.
Right. Okay. I'm sure you've got a figure of that.
Yes. Oh, thank you. No, thank you.
So I, I just wanna, just while we're talking briefly about the Glen Park Joint Board and these issues, I, you know, we, it always seems we need to discuss this periodically. That, I mean, their role is to make recommendations to either, you know, the village board and the town board who jointly own the park, although the village essentially manages it. And frankly, I think it would be more efficient and, and better for Ben because the village essentially is responsible for the maintenance. If they want those sorts of things, to make written recommendations that can then be considered rather than just sort of ad hoc suggestions that then have to get filtered through a liaison. I mean, obviously, that's part of the role of the liaison is to bring that back to the village board. But I just think it would be better if they would actually make recommendations for those sorts of things.
And they do, Chip. I get that about once a month.
So this letter should have gone directly to what we're saying.
Well, they think he's saying, look, kind of put it right so they can technically give you what you give to them.
Or they, or you make it to see here, they can copy, or he said it's better than CP, yeah. So just, you know.
Usually, that's kind of what I'll do too with committees. I'll say, email Ben directly, just copy me, or Jamie or whomever, just copy me so I kind of know what's going on.
And, and I mean, frankly, that board has operated in ad hoc manner for as long as I've been around, so.
When you were a member of that board, even.
That's what I mean. So. I love it, but man, it could take, it could take all your time in the world, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Well, and, and, and I just think, I, I just think there's also has been somewhat of a history of, of them thinking that they can decide what needs to be done in there. And they, you know, I'm not trying to downplay their significance or their role, but only the village board, you know, and, and subject to the agreement with the town can, can make those decisions. They, they absolutely should be making recommendations. But, but they should be of clear understanding that it's, you know, they're only recommendations. That's the only authority that they have.
Okay. Okay, so, Trustee Yates, you're.
I'm really happy. Those are, these are.
A couple.
I heard there's the electric bicycles, you know, Keat and I were working with that group. I don't know if we've heard back from some of the other stakeholders.
No, I saw you kind of pull that away side there.
So we'll pick that up, you know. Yeah.
Get it going again.
Yeah, the mural update, we can probably take that off because we're done as of this week.
Yeah.
Holiday in the Village, we'll wait to see what WBA comes back with and we'll continue to monitor what, if anything, we'll do for Holiday in the Village this year. So I think that's all I got.
You know, I had just mentioned to Kate today, I went to Eastern Hills Mall, had that fair food event. So they had like the funnel cake, funnel cakes, the cotton candy and all that. So I actually went over there and, you know, had fair.
Gorged.
It's like a greasy corn dog.
Well, you know.
It's true, actually.
So, and I just got to thinking, you know, that is, that could, that could be maybe something that maybe a youth and rec meeting might want to look into doing is bringing in, you know, vendors and doing, because nobody really got to, you know, all the fairs were closed this year, so nobody, and it was very well-attended. I will say that. It seemed to be very well-attended.
Was it outside?
It was outside. They set up in the Eastern Hills Mall parking lot and they had, you know, the, the corn dogs, the funnel cake, the cotton candy, all, all the things. So, you know, it was all fair food and, you know, it just might be something different.
Well, we've, the farmer's market, where one of the managers was asking, do the, do they want to do something and just, instead of doing a tent in the town lot this year, just let them set up like we do on a Saturday. And then if we want to do something, then Youth and Rec could do something in the back, but maybe like you said, is invite some of these carnival whatevers to come be a part. And then the co-op may do a tree cell in the back as well. So there's things kind of like in the works, but we're kind of watching to see what's going on, you know, so.
Yeah, sort of like a Christmas market, a real one.
Yeah, I'd love to have one. It's what we've been kind of playing with the past couple of days. You know, you've been to Europe and seen the ones as well. You know, the Christmas markets in Europe is really cool. That's what I'd love to have eventually. So, and maybe it'll happen one of these years. This year, I don't know what we're gonna do this year. There's no fun this year.
No.
Scrooge.
So we're gonna try to make some. That's kind of what we're doing. We're, we're working within the state guidelines with the farmer's market for at least Halloween to do something safely. And I think we can probably do something for the holiday market. It would really depend on the vendors if they want to come out.
Right, and speaking of Halloween, trick-or-treating is on, you know, as of now still in the village.
Don't we always declare that?
Well, we can do it in our next meeting, which will still time.
Usually you do it at the, the meeting that closes.
Yeah, which will be in the next one. So we should, we should do that. Can we, let's, we should put that on the agenda now so.
I never know what Halloween is, so I, I can't.
Well, we declare it so that you can have them trick-or-treating.
Quite for them. So the other thing that is the holiday, you know, our tree lighting ceremony that we traditionally do out front, which is separate from, you know, the market that we've had historically with the tent and stuff. So I'm just wondering what people's thoughts are today with that. I know things are changing, but.
Right.
Is that when you have the carolers as well, where you can have that, I don't think.
We want to, we want to carolers, you know, it's like, no, we want to.
No, you can't, can't, no.
No, we want to do carolers, but I, I would still like to have us in some, you know, format, lighting the tree out front. I think that that is very doable.
Yeah, especially Sebastian's star.
Right. Well, we talked about trying to do somewhat of a televised form of, of that, so that way the public could be involved in it. And then we kept it to maybe the village staff and maybe Sebastian's family, have them light the tree this year maybe in honor, you know, or in memory of Sebastian. So, you know, I, I think we're open to whatever we can do. If maybe it is still a public event, but limited, we could create it by sign up or something. I don't know. I think it depends on as we get closer, what we can do.
Well, it's, yeah.
Because I think everybody can almost, that time of year, it's not hard to wear a mask. You want to wear a mask, pick a whole face covering and stand in the cold, right?
Wear a scarf.
Wear a scarf, exactly. So you have the, the easy way to have a built-in mask. And so I think that maybe you could.
Well, maybe we can just, because it's really not that far off, so maybe we can just kind of start thinking about what we want to do with that. Because I know that's separate from the whole, the whole tent and I, I don't know how feasible that tent scenario really would be this year, but certainly we should do.
Well, that's what we were thinking was, because there's so much uncertainty, rather than, than rent a tent for the lot, which we didn't have funds for it anyway, was we, we bought the sides for the pavilion. So the thought was is if we're allowed to do it, if there's an interest to do it, we can do that last minute. We don't have to have permission from the town to do it in the lot. We can still, under the farmer's market, they can still set their tents as they have been doing. And it doesn't disrupt their Friday or Saturday or setup breakdown. We just do it in our park and it is what it is.
Well, and I think the key with that too, making that even more successful, was getting in food trucks and food type vendors.
Yeah.
Because the reality, we're not gonna be passing out cookies and hot chocolate and just cross that right off the list. So I would, I would. So I would, I would say there's a bigger need for to do the food vendors and the food trucks now more this year than ever.
Yep.
And, you know, you can almost do those lining up into Island Park, you know, and then people could, you could have some tables out there. People could socially distance the tables and, or wherever, take the food back to their cars or, you know.
Yep. Yeah, we used to, historically, we used to do a bonfire in the back, so we could still do a bonfire in the back.
Yeah, with marshals, you did, I know.
With marshals and, yeah, we'd have kind of prepackaged.
We could prepackage stuff in it.
We did prepackage stuff or something recently, I forget what it was though.
Well, smores would be easy, you could get ziplock bags and just prepackage the graham crackers with the chocolate with the.
A friend of mine was just telling, saying that the Girl Scouts just don't have that, they had like a best, that was just.
And just hand those out.
I think that's what the Youth and Rec was talking about for Halloween, if they were going to give out anything, you got to pack the stuff. This is your family pack, like for the decorating, you pick up your crayons or your paint, whatever, you go to your family table and you decorate your pumpkin or paint your pumpkin, whatever, so you do it as a family unit. And there's wipes that would be on the table, sea wipe on the table, before and after, right? So we just have to be perjudiced, so.
You know, I really like where the, where we have the holiday tree, it's an amazing spot. But it would be great if we could find a spot that would allow us to have people to spread out more, rather than be some humps standing on the side of the street, you know.
Being dinged by cars as they.
I mean, I, I, I want it, I want it to be there, but maybe for this year, if we could find a different place, a different tree in one of our parks.
In the past, we purchased a tree, you know, in the past, we purchased a tree when we did it at the mill one or two times. We did have a big tree down there because they're.
I loved it at the mill.
It was great.
Oh, it was wonderful.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, we could consider getting a big tree for back there and light the tree in the back, back there.
Well, even if we use Garrison or South Lawn, I know they're not as out, you know, out front of the public.
Yeah.
Areas, but I don't know, maybe for this year, we just kind of make it a little easier on people that, you know, they want to come to the tree lighting and they don't have to worry about, you know.
It is very.
Part of the great environment is being squished together and, you know, swaying and singing, you know, some Christmas carols, but we're not going to be able to do that this year.
Yeah, we could plunk a big tree right in the center of South Lawn Park and line the streets with, you know, the vendors or whatever, right, the perimeter of the park and food trucks and people can.
Do you have enough electricity?
I like that. Plunk, do you hear that Ben? Plunk that tree in the middle of South Lawn Park.
Plunk a trunk, plunk a trunk.
My, my, my only comment, and thank you Eileen, is put it in a place where there is power, please.
Yeah, I agree.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
That's okay. Don't we, don't we know some people who live over there, we can run a few extension cords from their house?
Couldn't, couldn't, as long as Zach or Electric uses the right kind of.
All right, very funny man.
We should do a dream tree.
All right, all right, only then you watch, don't mess it up, mark my words.
And honestly, in all seriousness, I mean, to what degree are we decorating this year? Because it's a month-long endeavor with multiple people of our DPW staff to get to the level that we've had the past couple of years. For not doing a big tree lighting, I mean, I know we want to make it look all super festive. And I could use a little decorating committee work here.
Well, I would think we'd still be doing the, we'd still be doing the, like the wreaths.
The wreaths, yes, yeah, obviously, and Candy Cane Lane.
Yeah, they're very nice, yeah.
Trees on Island Park.
Well.
Perimeter of the pavilion.
We're not having the event at Island, and I kind of like Al's idea for the space to utilize South Lawn Park.
Yeah.
Then I would just, I would, oh, the power.
Fire up a generator.
But the tree stays on throughout the season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it might not this year.
Maybe not this one.
That's kind of sad.
Why do it?
Well.
And I, yeah, I agree.
How about, how about Noel Nature Center? You know, that area where your natural park is, somewhere near there, put a tree up? It's a lot of space. There's power there.
About three or four years ago.
You, you like that idea, Ben, or?
Yeah, putting a tree down there in Glen Park, you could see it from Maine.
Yeah.
Oh.
Administration.
Is that better for you than South Lawn?
No, because it's completely new and different, and it's going to be a pain in the butt to figure out, but, you know, we can make it happen.
So what, what place exactly do you recommend at Glen Park, considering the electricity in that?
On there, it is where it is.
There's a lot of power down there. You can, I mean, we could, we could talk about many locations, I don't want to be the arbiter or the decider of your tree location. That should come from you guys.
We want you to be.
I'll tell you if it's very feasible or less feasible.
What's the most feasible that you recommend?
I'd have to take a walk down there and find out, you know, take a walk.
Well, we certainly would have power at Island Park if we did a tree at Island.
Yeah, but if it's in the middle of the yard, it's, it's, you run an extension cord across the ground. That doesn't make me warm and fuzzy.
Okay.
Unless you step on it, then you would be.
We do, Ben, could we snake it, if we did it kind of in the center of what I call the quad, the big open area? If it's a big enough tree, could we not run the extension cord under, this sounds crazy, but if you ran it from the top down, like run.
Yeah, like we, that's how we light the trees, we run it through the trees, so it's not on the ground.
Yeah.
But that's a big tree. It's a, if you don't want that wire to hang low enough that somebody could grab it.
Well.
It's like, there's just little logistic, you know, things.
All right, let's see where it kind of continues to go, WBA, well, they're meeting next Wednesday, I think.
Yep.
So we'll be on that call Wednesday, and then we'll see how that goes and how the co-op comes along, because I could give them some information too, so, we'll see how things can shape up. But I would be curious to talk to the people, but just to know one piece of notes, who organized that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I guess you probably call, you know, just the.
I bet the chair chamber had something to do with it.
Maybe, it was very, it was very well organized.
Hey, Keaton, do you know when we started the Holiday in the Village meetings in the past?
Yeah, actually about a week ago, we were starting.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's why, that's why.
Time was now. Yeah.
Yeah. So. I guess. So the tree outside of Village Hall, if we light it up, you're, it's probably just going to, you can say it's probably going to be less decorated this year, is all I'm hearing. Right? Because of the, with the tree at Village Hall, regardless of what we're doing, be less decorated this year?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just the full extent of, you know, are we doing what we've done in the past, regardless of whether or not we have a tree lighting ceremony?
Oh, I see what you're trying to.
Well, I would love to, I think we should, right? We have the decorations, if we can get them up, we should. We should.
That's all I needed, no.
We've discussed, the farmers market has and the co-op has, of doing it the potential weekend of the Black Friday weekend to kind of capture on the shopping.
What?
People buying their trees, because we do it like this, the first or second weekend in December. And everybody's already got their tree, so.
That's a good idea, actually, because you're right.
And everybody buys their tree and you're kind of starting to get into, I know it pushes that timeline, so you're, but I just, while we're talking about.
A little bit.
So could we do that, could we have everything ready to go, like by, like a Thursday?
By, by November 28th?
I have a newborn, I'm tired, I'm sorry.
That's six and a half weeks.
Yeah.
I don't mind the leaves not being picked up.
Oh, nobody would mind that one bit, Matt, it'd be fine.
When did you have the Christmas sale, a tree sale last year?
The first weekend.
Yeah, it was so fresh.
Oh, yeah.
I want to get another one, and it was wonderful, do that again, though.
I don't know if we can get that old guy.
Oh, he was great.
He was interesting, that you said that, that was interesting.
Yeah.
It was the first year we used that tree, it was down in Warsaw.
That's great.
It was crazy, so it was fun.
So you say the 2018, you may be doing that, possibly?
Well, that was the first initial, like I said, we, everything's kind of up in the air at this point.
It's almost a month away from Christmas.
Yeah, we just thought with Black Friday, because that was some of the response we got from some people who came by, they said, oh, we already bought our tree. Because we go get our tree that weekend as well.
You still sold most of them, right, from what I recall?
Yeah, we got rid of most of them, I'm sure.
Yeah, either way, because I wait till the end, I don't.
We took them to the Bad Brothers, Bad Brothers, they consigned them for us, so we didn't actually have a loss, so it was actually good.
Good.
So, so we'll work with them this year, but it depends, they won't have as many for us this year if we get to that, that's.
Good.
All right.
Well, we have lots to think about, so.
Hopefully we can shape it up here soon so that we can do, if he's going to be creative, Matt. Sorry, Ben. Ben, do you have any questions at this point, like what do you?
What are we doing? We're decorating to the fullest extent and we're having a tree lighting, when?
Well, we don't, it, the earliest would be that Black Friday weekend, if not, it would be that first weekend in December.
Which is traditionally the first weekend, but I can see, I can see you, if the co-op decides to do the tree sale, I think that would be best served on that, that Black Friday, so we could still do the tree lighting the first weekend. Yeah, they don't have to be the same.
And I think too, the hope was to draw people into the village for the sake of our village stores, to bring them in as part of the weekend.
But we have the tree lighting, everything's closed by then anyhow, the restaurants are open.
Yeah, usually WBA, kind of, we work together with WBA, they're, they're evented that same weekend typically. You know, obviously, we have the horse and parrot rides this year, they don't know what they're going to do with Santa, and they do Santa, but it'll be a different type of setting with Santa. Yeah, they're in a plastic box, talking through a microphone.
Oh, that's.
I'm kidding, yeah, I think it'll be, I think the Irishman may go suit, and I think you don't sit Santa's lap, you put presents between with the pond, so that we can socially distance Santa, so, you know, again, everything's trying to be creative and do what we can do with the guy.
Maybe Santa should be a hockey player, I mean, he can sit in the penalty box.
Right.
But that doesn't seem right. Now that I think about it, why would you Santa, never mind, I, I derailed in my mind.
I've said to everybody this year, I think of everything possible, because you know what? Be creative, we've got to be creative this year and try to do something.
For sure.
My good thing, maybe Eastern Hills, I thought it was very creative.
Yeah, we can still do it.
Fun, different.
Cool, yeah, I like different, sometimes different really works well.
You can start a new tradition.
Yes, I agree.
Also, I guess, think about the idea of the, of like the food truck thing. Why can't they be along the curve?
They could be, they can spread out the length of the, about the stretch of distance.
Yeah.
But we have a tree in Glen Park, they can use the parking lot.
Oh, that's true.
Where have, they have the food trucks.
We could even close Glen Avenue.
I'd love to do that. And have the tree in Island Park, that'd be gorgeous, think about it. And close Glen Avenue, you have the food trucks in the parking lot.
Or even just along Glen Avenue.
It'll be a wonderful one then.
So that would be the.
Yeah, because it's narrow, getting over bridges.
I like that, the, kind of like at the Arts Festival.
Right.
Have a food truck holiday, because we're so ready to go out and do something like this, so I'm sure it'd be very well attended.
Yeah.
And I don't know how soon you'd have to let these food trucks know that that's our interest.
Well, some of them will winterize the trucks, so we, if we're going to do it, we should let them know so they don't winterize at least until it's a fact. So maybe sooner is better for the food trucks, probably closer to the winter. And if we don't have time to fully decorate, you know, with DPW, then it's not what, it's not a normal year, that's for darn sure. So it's not as.
I mean, hey, Ben?
Just checking my calendar, sorry.
All right, wake up.
I'm here, trust me.
Just from a ripload point of view, and a power point of view, it's, there's no, there's no availability to take the, the lights that we would normally do in Island Park and trees and instead run those like on the railings along the Glen Avenue Bridge, for instance.
Yeah, it could be done, yeah. On the south side, easier than the north side, and north side, we don't have power readily accessible until you get all the way up to the Noel Building. But you could do it on the south side.
Something.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Glen Ave isn't all dolled up, you know, so are we changing our, that's kind of where I'm trying to get. We're going to be doing a relocation. How much are we going to dress up that area versus what we dress up normally behind Village Hall and in Island Park?
Right, yeah, and that's, that's where my head's at too, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of the, the most efficacious way to dress it up that also doesn't actually add labor to the, to the issue, but could.
Once again. I shouldn't have opened my big mouth, I love the idea of the tree down there, but it's, man, reinventing the wheel here in short time, Ben.
Yeah, I was going to say, do the time, and because everything is weird this year, I think if we just kind of did the same thing we did in the past, instead of maybe add a tree in the back that we can light and put people around.
What if we just, what if we just keep taking everything back up to Main Street, that is where we're used to dressing up? And what if we closed off a section of Main Street like we did for the block party?
We, we don't have a permit for that, we haven't started a permit for it, to get a permit turnaround in this amount of time, maybe you can do it. I'm not going to say no, you can't, we can try, but if it doesn't come through, then we just got to make sure we have contingencies.
Go access the businesses and the restaurants on Main Street, so you have food trucks and people would have choices if you wanted to have somebody selling, you know, holiday candles or whatever too, they could, you know, and you would just make it plenty of room to space out on Main Street for trucks.
I can already hear the state. They don't know if it's going to snow that day and what, I mean, just close this street down in the middle of winter. We haven't tried it, we can try it. I don't want to say no to you, but.
When it was closed for the Main Street block party, it was the middle of summer, so we didn't have to worry about snow, but now we do, because you're right.
And those, those permits are filed months, six months ahead of time.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Got them barely ahead of time, you know, before the event happens, and that's how all of them go.
Yeah, so much for that.
I'd love to see that, that's been talked about from day one, again, for the village tree lighting, but it's the closing down Main Street.
The parking lot, like for the market, but instead of having farmers market vendors, why don't you bring in food trucks? Why don't we have like food trucks and, you know, or, I mean, I'm just saying food trucks, I'm not trying to exclude us, you know, like if somebody wants to make homemade donuts or sell hot chocolate, you know, I, I'm fine with that too, I'm just, but having things there. And then, you know, we would just do a tree at Island Park somehow.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe we still do just the one, I don't know, maybe we just do the one at Village Hall and.
Yeah, the tree in our, last year, we does have big trees down in Warsaw, so we could get a big tree, this price is one of them, so.
And put it in Island Park.
Do you know the history behind the tree at Village Hall?
No, that's the other thing.
Your history?
The history of the tree at Village Hall.
Yeah.
Used to be every year, the village bought a very large tree and it got quite expensive. So Nick and Marsh Roth donated a very large live tree, and that's what that tree is that we light every year, is the tree that was donated by the Roths for the specific purpose.
Thank you, Judy, I was just wondering how I would go about procuring a large tree.
Yeah, I know, I got a guy.
We all got guys.
Right.
So, you know, it is going to be a cost for us to spend, so I don't know.
What if?
That's ironic.
Okay, idea. What if we livestream the tree lighting? Projected on the inflatable screen. What if we livestream the tree lighting, projected on the inflatable screen in Island Park? So no one's massing up here, cramming in. Got Island Park, they need distance as far as they want to be, and they have full view of the livestream of the tree lighting, they, you know, the countdown. Right.
That, I like.
Brilliant, done.
Add that to your list of twos.
Oh, that's easy, I, I do everything the same now.
Yeah.
You guys do the screen, I don't know how that thing works.
Please through again.
What they pay me the big bucks for.
And where, where are you getting those from exactly?
Contingency, yeah, don't tell Judy either.
All right, so we solved that one, then, all right. We should, we should work on, um, doing something.
Yeah, what we're doing. Yeah, like I said, we'll have to see what, which of the farmers wanted to come out.
Let's go do, like, music.
Well, well, so I was thinking was, is that if we did that, then what we could do is if Amber's Youth and Rec, as the movie writes and things, then we could be playing like Frosty. Frosty or White Christmas or.
National Lampoon's?
No, that's wildly inappropriate, but, um, but, yeah, I mean, something like that, or, 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 you know, Rudolph or whatever. And then it could just be ambiance, because no one's going to sit there long enough to watch.
An entire movie.
An entire movie.
No.
But if it's on, and something's saying, you can imagine the kids running up the screen, like, Frosty, you know, whatever, just to add something to it.
Right.
And then we break and cut in the livestream. Out.
Versus.
I mean, to that end too, if we could, you know, if you really wanted to add to it, you could find some sort of a sing-along. With the, you know, like a carol, with the ball bouncing on the.
I don't think we're allowed to sing.
And you know what it's like, you can't sing, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, nevermind.
Twelve feet.
Yeah, sorry.
Singing, don't even.
Forgot about that.
Yeah.
No singing, no having fun, no.
Stand there and look.
It's like Thonner Town, in the, in the one Christmas.
Yes, yes.
Like the.
Burgermeister.
Yeah, Burgermeister.
Burgermeister.
Yeah, Burgermeister.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's.
All right, well, we're ending right before time, so that's good, so, um, we're good, any, anybody else with anything before we?
So is, are we going to set up a committee or a group to talk about this again further? Sounds like there are a lot of loose ends.
Yeah.
Historically, we've always had a, a, a committee that's met nearly weekly, it seems, or every other week to get this event hammered out.
Why don't we set up something early next week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think from a decorating aspect, I think you guys are just going to do whatever you can in whatever we have, what we typically do. And then, you know, just the getting the livestream over to, you know, your idea with the screen.
So why don't we, if we set it up for Monday, we can actually invite Frank Michler or whoever from the WBA.
Yeah.
That way we can gather ideas from them, and they can take it back to WBA.
Um, yeah, for the meetings on Wednesday, right.
Yes, we met on Monday.
Right, just to let them know what we're planning, and if they want to be back on.
Always thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone, thank you, and we'll see everyone in two weeks. Yeah, we're done.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, thank you, good night.
Good night, all. Hi, everyone.